All right, good evening. Placerville is five o'clock. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join and please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sargosa.
Here.
Councilmember Nell.
Here.
All right, item three on the agenda, ceremonial matters. We have none tonight, which brings us to item four, closed session report, and City Attorney Ibrahimih.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did meet in closed session regarding labor negotiations with Local 39. There was no public comment before we met, and the council provided direction to staff.
Thank you. Item five, adoption of the agenda.
Call move we adopt as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sargosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Nell.
Aye.
All right, item six, announcements and presentations to the public. Six point one is the introduction of our new building official, Greg Horstfall. Mr. Reyes has the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is very exciting for my department and for the city in general. As you're probably aware, we've been without our own on-staff building official for many, many years now. And we had attempted to hire a building official in the past unsuccessfully, so I think we went ahead and made an effort to recruit again, and I'm very, very pleased with who I'm going to be introducing to you. His name is Greg Horstfall, and I want to talk a little bit about his background first before I actually have him come up and say howdy. Anyways, let me start with his education. He is a graduate of UBA College. He has an associate's degree in social and behavioral sciences, which I think is important to have in our department. He's a graduate of Butte College with a certificate in building inspection technology. Talk a little bit about his previous work experience. He was previously a building inspector and plans examiner with El Dorado County Building Services. That's where he worked before coming over to the city. He was an engineering technician and inspector for the state of Hawaii, and he was also a quality control inspector for the state of Hawaii for civil construction projects. His certifications are vast. He has a number of international code council, or what we call ICC certifications, and these include, and they're under different categories, so under residential, he's a certified residential building inspector, a certified residential plumbing inspector, a mechanical inspector, an electrical inspector, and residential energy plans examiner. Under commercial, he's a certified commercial building inspector, plumbing inspector, mechanical inspector, commercial electrical inspector, commercial energy inspector, a fuel gas inspector, an accessibility inspector and plans examiner, and a soils special inspector. As for being a plans examiner, he's also certified residential plans examiner, residential building plans examiner, plumbing plans examiner, mechanical, electrical, fire plans examiner, and commercial energy plans examiner. Under the administrative category, he is, this is where he's a certified building official, so we wanted to make sure he has that, besides all this other stuff. He's a permit technician, property maintenance and housing inspector, and a zoning inspector. So that was a real highlight for me, because, you know, I can send him off, maybe take care of some of that zoning stuff I never get to. So he also has a number of certifications, what we call combination designations, and I had to talk to him about this regarding what exactly it meant. Well, it means that you have a certain number of different certifications, then you get this larger certification, so you have a greater breadth of what you're allowed to inspect. So he is a certified combinations inspector, he's a residential combination inspector, commercial combination inspector, he's a combination plans examiner, a permit specialist, a housing and zoning code specialist, an ICC building inspector, a building code specialist, plumbing inspector, plumbing code specialist, mechanical inspector, mechanical code specialist, electrical inspector, and electrical code specialist. And then above all of that, he's also a master code professional. And what does that mean? It means that he passed the required breadth of all of these certifications to be what's called a master code professional. So with that, and I'm out of breath reciting all these qualifications. So with that, please welcome Mr. Greg Horstfall to the City of Placerville.
Well, thank you very much for having me here. I do appreciate the introduction. That was so uncomfortable. He said I'd come up and say howdy. Howdy. Want you to know, since I've been on, it's been very exciting and a pleasure to work with the city and the community as well. And I'm grateful to be here, and I can't wait to come back to work tomorrow, Pierre. Thank you, everyone.
It's always a good day when the building, the new building official shows up to work.
Well, welcome. We are very happy to have you, and I'm really excited to see the building department filling out. I know that we have been needing an extra body, and it's great to find one that is so qualified. Does anyone like to make a comment?
I would, thank you, thank you, Mayor. It's, over the years of either being in, on the city council, or being involved with the city, or being involved with downtown merchants, I've had the occasion to have a lot of conversations about our building inspectors. And it's always coming back to me, you know, and I'll just be honest, that most people had challenges with our building inspectors. And for the first time ever, I had a contractor walk in and say, "Who hired that new building inspector?" And he wasn't very nice about it. And he says, and I said, "Well, you know, city staff did. I didn't have anything to do with it." And he said, "You know what? He is the first guy that I, that walked in that smiled, that had a good sense about him, and he worked well, you know, he knows his stuff, and he's doing a great job. So whoever hired him, tell them thank you very much." And he said he's had that comment from a few different contractors that he knows and talks with. And so, I mean, that's the best, I mean, to me, if our contractors are happy and they're working with them, you know, you can say, you can say, "You really screwed up with a smile on your face, and you work it out and you get it done." Or you can be a not-nice guy about it, and there's two different ways to go about it. And he felt very appreciative of your approach on how you worked with him, as well as other people extended that same sentiment. So thank you very much for being the face of our city and doing it in such a nice way.
Yeah, Greg, again, welcome to the city. I just want to say, it is the same thing, you know, when I've talked to folks in the past, you know, there hasn't been very complimentary when it's come to our building official, and I haven't had a chance, and no one's come to me yet on, with you, Greg, but I'm just excited to have somebody on, you know, in person, not having a contract. I think it makes a world of difference. You're going to get to know the folks in the community in a way that a contract building official just wouldn't be able to. So really excited to have you. I know, last time I talked to Pierre, when I was getting a patio done in my backyard, we found an open permit from 20 years ago before I bought the house, and so you'll be coming to my house as well to finish off my, the stairs going up the front of my place. So looking forward to that as well, and welcome.
Just echo the welcome aboard, and we're excited to have you. Thanks, Greg.
I just wanted to say the same thing. Welcome aboard, and finally Pierre can sigh every leave. So congratulations for, to you too, Pierre, and for picking such a great candidate. Thank you.
All right, it's always nice to welcome somebody to the city team, so welcome again, and we're just thrilled to have you. Moving on to item six point two, this is to acknowledge and file the workers' compensation trending report as of June 30th, and Mr. Warren has this.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, tonight we have Eric Baumel, Director of Client Services from Sedgwick, to provide the, or present the report for you. So we'll get that started here.
Good afternoon. I'm Eric Baumel, Client Service Director with Sedgwick. I am over the Northern California Cities Self-Insurance Fund program, so that is what Placerville is part of, so we handle the workers' compensation claims for the city. So today, we're going to take a look at the last five years and the trend data. So what we'll be doing is looking at seven one, 2016 through June 30th, 2021. So bear with me, it's a very small screen, so I did put my glasses on, so we'll see how well this works. So I will try to describe it for the rest of you. So the top graph we're looking at is just the different claim types, and so you have medical only, which is pretty much what it sounds like. It's just medical treatment, they're not off of work, they don't have any permanent disabilities. So those are the claims that if we do have, we like to see, because they're usually cheaper, and they close a whole lot faster. So that top graph just shows the two different types that we received over the past five years. The indemnity claims, those are the ones where people off of work, either they have surgery and we have to pay them while they're out, or also when they have any kind of permanent disability. And so those ones, we want to try to stay away from. But in the city data, we look and we do see quite a bit, that's going to be with the claims for the police officers and the maintenance crews, and we'll take a little bit more of a look at them here in a little bit. The second graph down below is what is showing the paid and total incurred for the past five years. So the bottom color on the graph, that's the amount that has currently been paid on each case over the last five years. The top color, which is darker, that is the amount of money that we're expecting to pay on those cases. So both of those, the paid and the future, that's called the total incurred. So the total incurred is the picture of how much we're expecting to pay for that case in its entirety. And so when we reserve cases, we look to see what is the most probable outcome, and that's where we put the dollars to it. And so that's where you see on the graph, last year, we have quite a bit in reserve, so we're still expecting to pay quite a bit from last year's, last year's claims that came in. Next one, it's going to be a little bit hard to see, but on top, we're just looking at the different categories of payments. So there's three different types that we look at. The top one, the light colored blue, that one is the indemnity payments. Those are going to be for your off-time and permanent disability payments. There's a middle section there that's a little bit darker blue, and that's going to be the medical. So that's anything related to medical treatment, your surgeries, your braces, anything like that. And then there's a smaller darker blue up there, that's for expenses. That's for our doing like bill review and any claims expenses that are associated with managing those claims. Next here on the bottom is our recoveries. And so what is a recovery? Let's ask ourselves that. A recovery is money that we get back from being paid out on a claim. And usually, we will see these with automobile accidents, we'll subrogate against the person who hit us to get back the money that we have spent on that. And sometimes we also go and look into trying to recover from homeowner's insurance. Let's say if we have an inspector that might slip and fall on somebody's yard that wasn't maintained, like trip, just like on sidewalks in the city, same thing applies. We can try to work with homeowner's insurance to try to get recoveries. So that is something that we do try to pursue. And then next up, we have the days missed. So only recently, in the past two years, we've seen some days missed. So that column that we're looking at, that is going to be the aggregate, and I think there might have been four or eight claims that consist of that big column there. So it is trending down, which is good. We hope to get back to the prior years where we didn't really see anybody missing time from work. That's always going to be the goal, but if they are going to be out, we want to see that as minimal as possible. So we're still doing a great job with that. Next up is going to be, I believe it says closing ratio. Thank you. So with closing ratio, what is the closing ratio? So a closing ratio is the amount of claims that we closed in a month divided by the amount of claims that we came in. And so we want to shoot for closing the same amount that came in that matched it to the amount that we closed. We want to shoot for 100% closing ratio. And I do want to get a little bit closer look. We can look at it later, I can't take the microphone with me, but we have been over 100% closing ratio for the past five years, so there's even one in the middle that was 400%, which is really great. So we are trending in a great direction right now, and the claims team have been working really hard to make sure that we do close those cases as they come in to keep us at 100. So the city's doing really well with that, and it's really good to be proud of. All right. Next up, we have the top five cause of injury. So what caused the injury? That's what we want to see on here. So we start out with the most, which is going to be strains, followed by injured by an animal or an insect, absorption, inhalation, other than physical causes, which that's going to be your mental health claims, your stress claims, and then repetitive motion. So that's the top five cause of injuries. Next up, we have the top five part of body parts, the body parts injured, so the wear. So what is getting injured? A lot of it is going to be on our fingers. We have five cases that were for fingers, and then no physical injury is next. We'll take a peek at that more in a second. And then shoulders, low back, and knee, so your typical joints, that's what we're seeing a lot of. So I mentioned no physical injury, so let's see here. So this next graph at the top is going to be showing us the nature of injury. So what kind of accident is it? What kind of injury? Is it a laceration? Is it a burn? Is it a sprain? What is it? So with this one, we're starting at the top again with a strain, followed by lacerations, sprains with a P, and then miscellaneous injuries, and then no physical injuries. And if we look at the no physical injuries, the dotted line is way up there, that's showing the severity of it. So that just means there's a lot of dollars involved with these no physical injury claims. So at the beginning of the graph too, we see that dotted line really high up there too, because we do have a lot of claims, and strains don't typically last as long, which is really good. And then the who is next? Our top five occupation, so who is it that is getting injured the most? And just with many of the other cities, we have police officers, which is our number one occupation. Next up is maintenance, and then police sergeant, police commander, and then mine attendant. And then next, we'll take a little bit of a look at the different sections here that we have. We have administrative services, we had two claims with them. Community development, we had one claim, it was a little bit odd, it was a denied claim for a finger laceration. And then park and rec, we have nine claims, and then police, 17, they're leading, trending us again. And then public works is 10. So nothing too out of, too shocking there, which is good. And then here's a top 10 list of the current claims we have, so we'll just touch on the top one. So psych, stress claim, that total incurred, again, total incurred meaning what we've paid and what we expect to pay, that's a little under $250,000. And then if we just flip to the other side of the spectrum and see the cheapest one at the bottom, we have a dog bite to the hand. This one, when I was doing this report, it actually closed, so that one was only around $2,000, $3,000. So thankfully, that one is wrapped up. And then we can look at some of the other cities just to see how we compare. Again, we are doing really great. The city is sitting at 39 claims, which is good for the size. Again, we haven't seen a lot of claims come in these past couple of years, which is great. If we knew how you guys were doing that, we'd probably share it with the other cities too, to help them out a little bit. But overall, the city's doing great. The claims are closing really soon, the amounts being paid on the claims are pretty minimal, so everything is going in the right direction for the city here. So I'm glad I was able to share a little bit of that with you. I do believe the PowerPoint is going to be available to whoever needs it, so you can take a little bit of a deeper dive into the numbers and check some of the graphs yourself. But absent doubt, that's going to be all that I have for today. Did anybody have some questions about what we went over?
Are there any questions from council?
I know that was a lot, so I apologize. Okay.
I'd just like to say, we're, I think we're getting a little smug. We keep getting all these great reports, and we're waiting like, ah, you know, is this going to continue? But all my time, a lot of, well, a lot of my time on the council, we've gotten great reports from you, so I hope we keep it up.
Yep, you guys are doing a great job. Definitely something to be proud of, and like you said, it's been quiet, and I hope nothing big explodes, but just keep doing what you're doing, and you'll be great. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have one comment, just real quick, on the last, one of the last slides there. When you compare all these agencies, there's a total of 22, and some are comparable, some aren't, but when you look at the city of Auburn, Oroville, and Town of Paradise, Red Bluff, they all have similar payroll levels as Placerville, and that's a very common use of when you compare risk. And when you take the average of all those cities, it's about, the average severity is 22,599, and the city of Placerville is 20,777, just below average, so I just thought I'd point that out to you.
All right, that's good news. I think we're probably the only city that has a mine attendant injury.
That's true.
I saw that, and I said, "That sounds like a very dangerous job." And then I looked into it, and like, oh, a mine, like the gold mine attendant, like, that sounds really cool, that's a whole lot better.
We might put that on the list of advertisements, to prove we really do have.
All right, well, thank you for that very thorough report.
We should see if there's public comment.
Okay. Are there, I'll open this up to public comment, even though we're not taking any action on it. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? If so, please step up to the podium. All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we will move on to item six point three. This is to acknowledge and file the miners on main presentation being presented by the El Dorado County Chamber of Commerce Leadership Class Number 14, and provide direction to staff.
Good evening, council members. I want to thank you for allowing us to present this to you. My name is Gordon Helm, I am one of the leadership class participants. This is the 14th class that the chamber has put on. If you're not familiar with these classes, they are a year-long class, and at the end of each one of the classes, the class is assigned a project, some kind of community project. Some of the other community projects that have been performed in the past are the Healing Garden at Marshall Hospital, the Crystal Trees on Highway 50, the Stand Up For More Comedy event, and the Pink Barn that was built at Union Mine. I got chosen to be the lucky one to present to you, so I'm hoping that you will help us to make this a reality for our community. I know our time is limited, so let's just get into this thing. So this is the agenda, I'm going to kind of just go over the concept, kind of talk a little bit about what progress we've made on it, and then what the next steps are, and then be a session for some additional questions, but feel free to ask me if you have any questions while I'm going through this thing. So what is Miners on Main? Well, Miners on Main originally came from a concept that we, I guess, experienced when we went on a study mission with the chamber to Greenville, South Carolina in 2019. Greenville had gone through a pretty big economic depression due to the fact that the textile industry had left the United States and gone offshore, and so that area was going through an economic decline, and they were looking for ways to try and, I guess, revitalize the downtown. They were making some pretty good headway when one of the community members brought this project forward, but they were, you know, they referred to it as Mice on Main. And what it is, is basically a scavenger hunt that is played during, or on Main Street in Greenville. Participants look for clues, and then find these mice, and then go, they're given a clue to the next one, and look for the next one. What it did to the downtown was it obviously had an economic impact because of the fact that people came down to play this game, they brought their families down, they tended to spend more time downtown because of the fact that they were doing this, so obviously they spent more money doing that. But it also brought visitors into town to play this game. So it had a definite positive economic impact to the community because of this game, but it also had another impact or a benefit that they hadn't really realized when they put it together, and that was it tied the residents or the individuals, the community members that played this game to the community. So when their children left and went to college, the children, some of these children actually wanted to come back to Greenville so that they could live there and have their children play this game also. So it built a connection between those individuals that normally would have gone away, and you would have lost the, you know, the benefit of those educated people that, you know, went to school and never came back, and brought them back to the, you know, to the community, which is obviously a benefit to the area. So that's kind of what, where this idea came from. So our concept was rather than having mice on main, we're going to propose a thing called Miners on Main. And when I say miners, I'm talking about gold miners, not kids. So hence the term is Miners on Main. The word miners loosely used in regards to the fact that it's representing any, it's representing individuals who had historical significance during the gold rush era. So we've kind of scattered out and found nine to 11 quote-unquote miners, and the game can be played using a clue sheet or using QR codes that individuals, you know, can scan with their smartphones. And like Greenville, we would assume that it would bring some economic, you know, positive economic benefits to the community in addition to, you know, bringing some social benefits to the community. So what have we done? Well, we've designed, first off, these signs here that would be the, kind of the boundary signs, and they would be at either end of the play area, for lack of better words. The west end is Sacramento Street, the east end is Clay Street. We would propose that these signs would be put on both sides of the street so that individuals would know that this is, you know, the boundaries of where you're playing, they can scan that QR code there, and then that would basically give them the clue to the nearest miner that is near that sign or in the direction of the play of the game. So that would take them, or, you know, would direct them to the next, to the next miner in the logical sequence of the game. Like I said, we're talking about trying to put these up both ends of the play area. There's a possibility, and I guess something up for discussion, is whether or not it would make sense to have additional signs, say by the parking lot off of Stagecoach Alley, because people would come into town, park there, and then they could walk into town if they see this, that would engage them to play the game. And also possibly at the parking lot that's there by Round Table Pizza, since that's, again, that's another area where people come directly off of Bedford and might potentially come into town and not see the ones that are on, you know, down at the other ends of the town. So those are the, kind of the boundary signs that we had, we're proposing. These are what people would actually be looking for. Initially, we had proposed using little statuettes, but in an effort to reduce cost and to make these, I guess, easier to install, we decided to go with a medallion. They are four inches around, so this is kind of what, what it, the size, actual size of what it looks like. People would be looking for these things, they would be quote-unquote hidden in different locations throughout the, you know, throughout Main Street, and the, and people, once they find them, they would scan this, it would take them to a webpage, which then would give you information regarding who the miner is that they found, and then would actually then give them a link to the clue to find the next miner. These are the list of miners that we're proposing to include. We worked with the El Dorado Community, or, I'm sorry, the El Dorado County Museum Commission to come up with these individuals. We've also included a, I guess, a remembrance to the native Miwax, because obviously, they were, they were here, they were involved with this, maybe not in a, in the best way or in a favorable way to them, but it's something that we wanted to acknowledge to them also. So these are, you know, these are the 11 individuals, I'm not really going to go through them, through each one individually, but those are the 11 that we've proposed to, you know, to put miners or put medallions out for. The locations of where we're proposing to put these are shown here on this map. There are seven locations that are on the south side of Main Street, five that are on the north side. Obviously, that adds up to 12, so there's one extra one in case one of the other ones doesn't pan out. One of them also, we're proposing to put at the base of the, what is it, the pedestals, I guess, that are at the crosswalks, so there are four of those pedestals, we're proposing to put it at one of those. So obviously, that would also give us the option that if, you know, the clue made sense to move it somewhere else, we'd have three other pedestals, you know, to possibly choose from. With regards to these locations, who owns all the locations? These are, those are the addresses of where we're proposing to put them. Six are city-owned, three we believe are city-owned, but we need to do further research to make that determination. One is county-owned, and then two are private property-owned, which we'd obviously need to get permission from the private property owners to allow us to put the medallions there. This is basically a sample of the QR page that somebody would get to once they found the clue or found the medallion, so it would give, again, it's just kind of a history of the individual they found. So it would give, again, it's just kind of a history of, of the individual they found, and then at the bottom, there would be a link that would take them to another page that would give them the clue to the next chronological, or the next miner in order. And I guess, let me go back to this map here. The, the idea is that, you know, you can come into play anywhere on, on this map or on this, this trail, so to speak, or this hunt. By, when you, when you scan the first one, obviously, you'll get the, the history of the individual, you'll get the link to go to the, find the clue, and the clue will then take you. So the, the intent is it goes kind of in a counterclockwise direction around Main Street. So you would, you know, go all the way, you know, down or up, I guess, the south side of the street, cross at, over by Clay Street, and then come all the way back down on the north side, and finish basically at the end there by Sacramento Street. So, let me get back to this one. So what are the next steps? I guess the, primarily the next steps are getting your approval to allow us to, I guess, put these medallions on the locations that are city-owned. Those include sidewalks and some lampposts, and like I said, the pedestal that is, that's near the, by the crosswalks. In addition to that, you know, obviously, we need to do some fundraising efforts. We need to, you know, get a deposit over to Arnold's for Rewards, because they're the ones that are, that we're looking at having, making the medallions. We obviously want to work with the, with the city to, to install these things, and then we're hoping to complete this thing by the, by fall of this year. With regards to, I guess, the fundraising, this is kind of the, what we're looking at is we're looking to get businesses to sponsor this, so there's, you know, different levels, $1,000 level, a $500 level, and a $100 level. In, in total, we're looking at the cost of this thing being somewhere around $5,000. We're, we're proposing to get 100 medallions so that we have several extras in case some get lost or get broken or somehow get damaged, you know, or stolen, so that we'll have them available to be replaced. So that's kind of what we're proposing. I do have some of our, our, our class team members, so to speak, here. Any questions? Any, any questions?
Well, thank you, Mr. Helm, for that presentation. It's a, seems like a really great project. Are there any questions that come to mind right now? I've got, you go ahead.
Okay. I have just one, and that is the pedestals that are, I guess, the light pedestals that the, those things are hit. Are those the same things, the green pedestals that I'm thinking of?
It could be.
I mean, you're talking about the ballards on those?
Yeah. And lit.
Yeah.
Just to recommend, that might not be, we end up, those end up getting hit on a fairly regular basis. We replace them.
Yeah.
It's problematic. I could see, I mean, just.
Okay.
Just food for thought.
We have one extra, so that may be the one extra one we don't use.
Right. Yeah. Food for that, because those ballards still, they, they seem to be a target rather than a deterrent for people's cars.
Yeah. Yeah.
One question I have is, who, who will be in charge of, like, the long-term maintenance?
Well, we're, in talking to Cleve, we're assuming that the city would take care of that long-term maintenance. You know, like I said, we're going to provide some extra medallions, quite a few, and hopefully, if we do this right, they're going to be rather difficult to remove, and so hopefully there won't be a whole lot of maintenance required.
Okay. And then the website and the app and...
The website would be on the Visit El Dorado, you know, page, so all of that, I think, once it's done, again, it's relatively static, because we're not talking about, you know, rotating any sponsorships or anything like that. So it's, it, the, the idea is that once it's done, it's done. But obviously, if somebody later on wanted to add, or we want to make this game better, you know, there's always a flexibility to allow us to do that.
I think it would be cool to have these medallions all over town with all, you know, at all of the historic sites. But, but starting on Main is a good, good place to start. All right. Let's see. I think I had one other question. So you're still working with the private property owners for the proposed...
We haven't actually approached the private property owners, even though one of them is right here in the room, but we're, we haven't, you know, I guess, we first, we wanted to get, you know, approval from the city to allow it, because obviously, the majority of them go into the city, so it really didn't make sense for us to start talking to the private property owners if we couldn't get the city on board first.
Okay. All right.
Clarification. I'm, I'm not quite, I don't think I'm understanding. This is an ongoing thing, and you're saying that the city would take over, like, the maintenance of the medallions or, but what about the whole program? Who would administer that yearly?
Well, the program, I guess, itself is, is, is web-based, so to speak. So it's, it's on the Visit El Dorado, it'd be on the Visit El Dorado website. I mean, and that was something that, I mean, we're flexible, obviously, to put it where we want. It could also be on the City of Plasterville website, you know, if we wanted to. But there, there, it's a static page that would, you know, if we go back to, let me see, this page here. So this, a page like this would be created for each one of the miners, and then nothing really changes on the page.
So what?
The Chamber's going to manage the webpage? And so when they click, when they click on that thing, it'll go to the...
Okay. And that's what I wanted, yeah. So the Chamber is really at the, the crux of this, but they would, and this would continue on a yearly basis?
Correct.
That it would be under the auspices of the Chamber.
Right. Correct.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
So, so I don't, I don't know if I need to ask, and I'm not sure what the, the procedure would be with regards to getting the city's approval on this, if you guys need to do something formally, or what the next steps would be.
Cleve, this agenda item says acknowledge and file, and provide direction to staff, but are we...
Right. Because of that, I wouldn't, wouldn't really say that you can give the approval tonight. I mean, you can, I think they've kind of got the impression that you like it, but we could bring back an item that I think at your next meeting to allow them to, that would be the formal approval, if that's okay.
Or, or can we provide direction to staff tonight, and then staff can just...
Just authorize us to take it from there?
Is that...
You can. You can, you can provide direction to staff, including delegating the authority to the city manager to execute whatever's necessary to effectuate this.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon.
Can we also take public comment?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Good evening, council members. Laurel Brumpf, I'm Chamber. I'm obviously the proud mama tonight, because this is Leadership Class 14, and God bless them, it took them two years to complete their one-year program because of COVID, and they're still standing. So we're really, really excited about this program. We're, we see that you're enthusiastic as well. Thank you for the leadership, the direction of giving staff the authority. But my ask tonight, because obviously, this is an economic impact, positive economic impact to the county, is that the council consider a monetary contribution from maybe ARPA dollars, because it is economic impact. Not for a lot. We already have a $1,000 deposit from Marshall, and we anticipate the program being about a total of $5,000 or $6,000. So we're not asking you to foot the bill for it, but we would hope that you'd have enough enthusiasm for the program to make a contribution toward the cost. That's my ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel.
Leo Benet Kooshon, I find this idea to be a great beginning. I think it could be improved by deeper community consultation. I have a little bit of hesitation that they're fixed medallions. I know many people that do these scavenger hunts, and they like changing, you know, different things to look for, and it's called geocaching, and they like GPS coordinates and all of that. So I think that's one thing that a deeper consultation might consider. I think deeper community input might increase the diversity of the folks that you're considering. And I'm not even sure to sharing, since I, I love history, pairing a scavenger hunt, which can be about clues and a prize, and is a wonderful tourist thing, with a more serious understanding of the deep history of Plasterville. I, I feel a little conflicted just sharing that, and I hope that as you consult with staff, that you give some consideration. I'm not really in favor of Black Bart and, you know, criminals that had a kind of indirect connection with this area. I think folks like Snowshoe Thompson and the first mayor of Plasterville, there are so many rich individuals that you could be considering. So I would urge that you take a deeper look at all those things. I would also ask the city lawyer to consider, when you read this item, you know, how do you provide direction? I think that requires a vote, from my perspective.
Thank you, Leo.
I'd like to get up and help stretch my feet. I just wanted to suggest that I talked to Chris Payne and Jill Kearney, both of whom are on the two boards of directors that were mentioned. They knew nothing about this. It hadn't been presented to them. From the El Dorado County Heritage Association, we knew nothing about it. I'm glad to see the Chamber interested in local history. It'd be good to do. The association, as for years, talked about a similar program, which we frankly got the idea from Wales. When you're visiting that country, you go around and see the kind of plaques that communities often have, and rather than get just the cryptic information, you get the QR code, and you can get extended information. So in a town that has so much rich history, imagine what a wealth of value that would be if you had the same thing here. It's just that we don't have the money, nobody's come to us and offered it. And what a great idea. Imagine being able to do that for the Chamber Commerce Building. Here is something the county owns, a real treasure on Main Street, a real old structure. Imagine, right now, you wouldn't need any money. They could put up a QR, you know, put up a code tomorrow, and you could get information about the Veterans Building that it once was. Pointing out that the, the blacksmith shop for Studebaker was right across the street. All that richness right there. A similar kind of code is now done by the Heritage Association down at the Fountain Tolman Museum. They have a code right in front. You can use that. So it's just a good start. I just do think that while the interest is welcome, it does need some help from actual people who know about history. And Chris talked to Dee Owens, and I don't know about where this stuff came from that's attributed to her, but it looks like it needs a lot more work to flesh out. And if they've got money to give around, I'll tell you what. We've been looking for grant money to follow up, to give the city an update to the historic registry that's on your website, and had been there since 1980, something like '80. It's just a start. And I can't tell you how many times the planning commissioner says, "Well, we can't do anything about this. It's not historic, because it's not in the list." So we'd love a grant to be able to get that updated. That would be nice. But I do think it needs a lot more work, and from people who know about history, so you could consult the groups that are actually mentioned on that list, rather than just list them. For example, a couple years ago, there was a tour on Channel 6 of Main Street, and someone from the Chamber was giving a tour and described the Hangtown Fry, the history came from people sentenced to death for their last meal had a choice, and they chose eggs and oysters. It went downhill from there. So they could use some help. Great idea. Glad to help you. We could use your money, too.
Thank you, Kirk. Hang on one second. Is the timer, Cleve, is the timer working?
It is now.
It is not working? Okay.
No.
I won't take three minutes. But someone can time me.
All right. Go, go ahead. We'll...
Use your timer on your, on your, on your phone. Gordon Helm, thank you very much for coming forward and making that report. It sounds like a, a really good start. And as a merchant downtown, I appreciate anything that will bring people downtown and enliven our area, so I think that's great. Yes, I'm glad that you, I took a few notes as you spoke. I have to be honest, I didn't look further at your presentation that you had posted, and there's not, you don't have it in the back, do you? Yeah. I don't think you prepared that. That's a nice idea when it's on the back table. But, so you say that you confirmed, conferred with the El Dorado County Museum Commission. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but there are sure a lot of other historians, too, that I'm sure would want to have some input, as Kirk mentioned. So I hope you use a collaborative approach. And I did go to the PEEK meeting on Friday, where this was first, when I first heard about this, and something, I think, very different was presented there. On the webpage for the city, there's a historical, historical resources page, and what we were presented at the PEEK meeting, I thought, was that the plaques in the city that currently exist, we're going to have a QR code put on them. But what I'm hearing today is a group of miners are going to be presented. So I'm a little bit, I mean, I'm assuming that what Gordon Helm is telling us, using the class, is correct, but that's not exactly what was presented. I'm not talking about Pierre, but someone from the Chamber gave a different kind of a presentation. So anyway, I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you for doing it. I hope you have, make it collaborative, include a lot of the people who know the history. And also, being a merchant, I'd, I'd like to, maybe you might present it to some merchants, the PDA, possibly, so that we might have some input as to where they might be downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
It feels unfamiliar to be up here again. Kathy Lishman, Plasterville. I think it's a great idea, because it brings something fun to the town after such a long time of people not having as much fun as they'd like. I, I do think, since this is the first time, and they're asking to put things on city property, that more time needs to be taken, and that, I can't quite get the picture of where the signs would be, but I think adding lots of signs in town needs to take a lot of thought. So I just hope, you know, you like the idea, say go ahead, it's a new idea, maybe it needs a little more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Seeing no further public comments on this item, I'll bring it back to council to discuss and provide direction to staff.
I have a question for Gordon. Is the, is the QR code, pretty much wherever that lands, something's going to pop up there? So that QR code could be changed, the landing page could be changed to whatever you wanted at any time, and so as history evolved, as we, not, not changing, as we, as we want to discuss other things in history, you can, you can bring those to light through the QR code as well. So it's not, it's, it's not necessarily a static thing. It could be living, changing, all sorts of stuff. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions while we have Gordon up at the mic? Okay. Thank you. I've got, I've got a question that I think would probably be for Terry, or, or maybe Cleve. Do, do we have any idea what, it seems like the long-term expense and maintenance would be fairly minimal to something like this?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm assuming that over time, depending on where they're placed, the QR codes could get damaged or need, need replacing. I don't know that that would, I don't think that would be a huge cost to replace those if we had to.
Do we know what the cost of the medallion with the QR code is?
I do not. I don't know if they have, I know they're working on getting those estimates, so I don't know if they have them or not.
Okay.
Medallions themselves...
Is the mic on?
They're about $15.
Okay.
Okay. So, and then I, you know, the QR code, we're still trying to determine how much that would be, but I mean, I can't imagine that, you know, that would be much.
Okay. All right. Great.
Along those lines, I, this is just a, I think those medallions are really a great thing, and I, just fearful that they're going to be open to want to be stolen, or borrowed, or whatever you want to call it. But, but, you know, it's just kind of a, so I'm hoping what Gordon said, that the, the way they're going to install them, that's not going to happen.
Since we have a financial ask, I think we have to agendize this for a future item. Laurel asked for a contribution, so that, that would need to be an agendized item.
The contribution part would.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I'm excited. I think this is a great idea. Thankful for a group to go ahead, spearhead it and bring it forward. That's, that's great. Have some concerns about the sign locations also. I mean, great in the parking garage, their gray walls, you know, that'll be, that's great, but as far as putting them on Main Street... Street, you know, I think staff will have to maybe bring back some recommendations, we'll have to have a little bit further discussion, because if you're going to let one group, then you need to let all the groups, so we need to think forward, you know, as Kirk said, they have ideas and groups, and who would want to bring things forward, so we might want to think a little bit ahead in a standard for some of that stuff. Thanks.
All right.
I personally think this could be the beginning of all sorts of things, it's not the end. And I do believe that, that, you know, there's a lot of people have talked about this, and I've been around for quite a while, and I've heard this conversation made, had many times in our community, about what a great idea it is, but somebody actually took the time and invested the energy, and did it, and that's what it takes. And so, I, by no means do I want to quash that, and I think that, you know, usually, and I've seen this happen over the, over just the last couple of years, somebody comes up with a great idea, and then all of a sudden, everybody else wants to jump on it, and say, "Well, I got something better." Well, you didn't, you didn't, these people didn't. I think, and I think that they stood up, and I think, first of all, Leadership El Dorado is a great program, a lot of our leaders in our community have, have been through that program, it, it enriches our community for what they do, and it, and it brings a better depth of leadership in our community, and I just can't begin to appreciate what the, what the Chamber is doing on that behalf. And, and I'm in full support of this. Now, we, this program could expand, they could work with it, other people could take it over, there's all sorts of ways to expand it, but I'm, I'm fully on board with, with the effort that they put in and supporting them.
Yeah, likewise, I think, exactly, what I was thinking was, don't let perfection get in the way of progress, you know, we're going forward, it's, I think, I love the idea, I love the concept, I know there's been different ideas bandied around about something like this, and this is sort of the first one that really has some momentum and the ability to get it done, so I'm, I'm excited about that. I think there's probably still time for discussion, I don't know if those would be the final eleven or not of people, but I certainly would encourage everyone to have those discussions, as a couple of, of the public had mentioned, in terms of just ensuring that everybody has input, and so, you know, whoever those are. And then the fact that we can always, I think, move those around as well, and have other people highlighted, or for different months, or for, so I think there's just a lot of possibilities with it, and I'm, I'm really excited about it. And I know, you know, this may come back as, as a council item, but you guys can put me down as an individual for a mother-level sponsor as well, so I'm really excited, I think this is really cool, so, thank you guys for bringing this forward.
I just wanted to say, too, that I really think that, that they've had a great example set, and this is, you know, one of the Chamber trips that I keep advocating for, this is just, we learned so many things, I've been on several of the trips, and unfortunately, I missed this one. But, just to see, to hear the enthusiasm in Gordon's voice, and what the, the town there, you know, what they experienced, and how successful it was, it just shows that what can be done with a program like that, so I'm all for it, too.
I, I agree, I think that this is a really great project, I'm excited about it, I think it will be fun, it will just be a fun thing to do on Main Street, it will be a fun way to introduce kids to history. I, I agree that there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of potential to, you know, have future groups take it over, to move the, the medallions around, to highlight different people, if you so choose, to expand to different areas of town, if it's successful, I think it's a great starting point. And I kind of want to echo Dennis's comments in regards to, you know, a lot of people spoke about getting more feedback and more community involvement in who we choose to highlight, and if you want to do that, I would absolutely encourage you to do so, but at the end of the day, this is your project, and, and I'm all for empowering groups to come up with a project, and bring it to the city, and take ownership of it. And I, I just, I want to thank you for bringing this forward, I think that it's, it's great, and, you know, more feedback is great, but we can always, you know, everybody has different opinions, and, and at the end of this day, it's, it's the project that you brought forward, so I am fully supportive of this. In terms of direction for staff, do we want to ask them to bring, you know, specifics of signage forward, or do we want to just give staff the direction to work out those details? I, I would be perfectly comfortable giving staff the discretion to kind of work out those details, and the final placement of the medallions, and how they're going to be installed.
I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
And I, I would also like to, I probably won't go to the mother-level level, but I'd like to support the program as well, so, I'll be, I'll be in there, you can hit me up at some point and see, see where I land on that.
And then, in terms of the ARPA funds that were mentioned in staff comments, we, we will be discussing how we're, we have a, a portion that still needs to be allocated, and we'll be discussing that, kind of, as a whole during the budget cycle, correct, Cleve? So, we can consider that at that time. So, all right, do we need a motion on this? Probably need a motion.
Yes, please, and I think what I'm hearing is that you'd like to direct staff to work with the leadership program to effectuate this.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to that effect.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Erin, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Burley.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sergosa.
Aye.
And Councilmember No.
Aye.
All right, I'm excited to see that in the months, months to come. Next item, six point four, brief comments by the City Council, and let's start with Jackie.
I attended the open house for the Placerville Bike Lanes, and I have attended a couple Fire MSR meetings for LACO.
All right, thank you.
Nothing to do, thank you.
Okay.
I would like to bring up, Rise and Shine is coming up, and it's coming up, oh dear, what's the day, is it the?
April thirtieth.
April thirtieth? Thank you.
Eight to two.
Eight to two. And, and it's a great way, I've, I've participated in quite a few of them, I think I've missed one, and it's, it's April thirtieth, and it's a day where, you know, as many as four hundred people in our community get out, and they find different places in the community they can sign up for online, to, to support and help show our community a little love, whether it's trimming trees, or, or spreading bark, or mowing and weed eating a cemetery, or...
Painting the garage.
Paint, yeah, there are so many, there are so many things that you could, one of the things I think is so neat, is when you're all done, and after you've done this for a few years, you look around town, and you see, you see places that you have, you have beautified and improved, and, and four hundred people doing that on one day a year is, is just an amazing compliment to our city. And bringing all these people together at one time, Rise and Shine does that, and they are very well coordinated, you get a lunch out of it, lunches are pretty good, and, and you get, I think you usually get a T-shirt, too.
Right.
And the T-shirts often are pretty cool. The last one was really bright. But, I can't begin to tell you how, what, what an impact it makes in our community, and bringing all those people together. So, I encourage you to go online for Rise and Shine, and, and find, and there's a whole list of all these different places in our community that you can sign up for, and it's like, it's like getting a ticket to a concert, but you're, you're basically buying a ticket for free, and you're putting your name in the hat to help out in these different areas, and you will be notified of, of what you need to do on that day. They do a great job of coordinating and getting everybody put together, so please go and sign up, it will be worth it, it's a lot of fun, I've got to meet a lot of new people and different people along the way, and I, I think, I think our, our police chief has signed up. Have you, have you signed up yet?
I haven't signed up yet.
You're going to sign up, though, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
As long as I get to use the gas-powered weed eaters, and those things are awesome.
Perfect.
You're in it for the toys.
Yes, and so, that's all I have for today, thank you.
So, I just, real quick, want to add, those that can't do that physical labor, they do encourage food donations, so, like baking cookies and all that kind of stuff, so, I don't have any more report.
All right, well, I was going to mention the Rise and Shine, but you did an excellent job, Dennis, way more detailed than I was going to be, so, it is, it is a great event, and I encourage everyone to save the date and, and sign up. And I also attended the Bike Lanes Open House, this is for the future Placerville Bike Lanes, which is going to be a really awesome project when it happens, and it's just another, another thing to be excited about in Placerville, so. That brings us to item seven, the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under the Consent Calendar are considered routine, and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote, unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Do we have a motion on the Consent Calendar? Or actually, wait, public comment. I would like to open item seven to public comment. All right, seeing none, do we have a motion on the Consent Calendar?
I'll move Consent Calendar's presentation.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Burley.
Aye.
Councilmember Helmuth.
Aye.
Mayor Taylor.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sergosa.
Aye.
Councilmember No.
Aye.
All right. Item eight, public con, public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. I ask that you state your name voluntarily, if you so choose, it's nice to connect names with faces, and to limit your comments to three minutes, which is a little bit hard with, so this is not working? The clock is not working?
The clock is not working, but I can say, "Time."
So, Dennis, would you mind just kind of like holding up the phone when there may be thirty seconds from three minutes? Okay, so that's how we'll do it tonight, apologize. There are these cards at the back of the room that look like this. If anybody would like to be contacted after public comment, for a follow-up by staff or a council member, you can fill out the contact information on this card, and hand it to our city clerk, who tonight is Erin Strawn, if you want to raise your hand. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and get started with oral communications, and I'll come back around for written communication.
Thank you, Ruth Michelson, merchant downtown. My comments come a couple of months late on an issue. I couldn't be, be here at the meeting the night that you discussed formula businesses, I was moving my son to the Bay Area, and I haven't subsequently been able to attend meetings as well, so it's a little out of sync to be talking about it tonight, but yet it's been on my mind, so I want to address it. The night that you all took the input from Peak regarding their work on formula, and essentially, in the end, came to the conclusion that you would make no changes to the current status of the ordinances as they stand, it was a disappointment. It's true, I don't think that that night there were many people here to comment, and, you know, life situations happen, but yet, you had in the form of the response to surveys, about twenty-eight merchant responses, and you had eight business owner responses, and I think that could sit in place of those people actually sitting here. And by strong majority, by strong majority, the merchants and the buildings, I misspoke, building owners stated that they wanted changes to your, to your stance on formula, on the historic portion of Main Street. And not only that, but the response to those surveys that Peak put out were a repetition of what earlier had been done, with the same results. It wasn't really a, per se, a PDA survey, it was more of an informal, but yet, someone who took the time to go from shop to shop to shop, and asking people, the merchants, what they, how they felt about formula. So, twice, you were given the responses, how us, people who make their living downtown, the stakeholders, how they felt about it, and I felt it was very disappointing at the, at the end of your, at the end of that presentation of the issue, that you chose to do nothing. I don't think that was really responsive. There have been two litigation matters, I don't really think they went all the way to lawsuit on sourdough and therapy, so there's obviously concerns on those issues. So, I guess, just that's it, in conclusion, disappointing, didn't feel heard, and I would think also, Peak, this is an issue that you handed over to Peak, that with events, and also the dining on the street. And I, I attend Peak meetings, oh, am I done? Is that three minutes or two and a half? Is that three minutes?
You can wrap up yours.
Okay, or maybe a phone call. It's just that when you, as City Council, say you're going to hand something to Peak, and then they work very diligently, and design their surveys, and get the results, and present them, and bring them back to you, and then, you know, time has gone by, and there's less interest from the public, and then you kind of just, I think, wave your hand and push it aside, that's how it seems to me, anyway. It's just disappointing, so, that's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and on the Fire Safe Council. And we had our event here a couple of weeks ago, and one of the things I asked tonight is how much progress has the city made in cleaning up storm damage along our streets and, and city properties, and the answer was, they don't have the manpower to do this. So, I would like to propose that we get a hold of Tribal Council, or Tribal, Tribal Fire is an organization that is looking for places to train their firefighters, and they are willing to come and help us. We just need to contact them and ask, and they could come and help us get this stuff cleaned up, because fire season is coming, we got a little reprieve yesterday, but it won't last very long, and if we don't get this stuff under control fairly soon, I don't want to see Placerville look like paradise, or any of the other places that have burned recently. So, I think this is something that we need to pay attention to, and we need, we've got offers for help from Tribal Fire, so, you know, they're part, they're right there at the Red Hot Casino area, and all we have to do is contact them, and say, "We'd love to have your help." So, let's do it.
Thank you, Sue.
Kirk Schmitz, I wanted to commend you, the city, for your plans to meet with the Planning Commission to discuss the historic guidelines for the city. It's a good move, and it's well overdue, it's been a dozen years. I would just ask and suggest that, before that happens, you give us some notice as to what the issue's going to be, what the presentation's going to be like, the format, so there's a chance to have some meaningful contributions, so we know what kind of issues are going to be raised, and how you're going to address them, something beyond that two sentences we had already. So, that's one thing that I think would be very helpful and very productive. All too often, we have instances where something is notified, you know, on a Thursday afternoon, we get the agenda, we're told that something's going to be just report and filed, and then it becomes an action item. That's usually a cue that it needs more examination, more input from the public, and this is a good example. The second thing is, while you're looking at the guidelines, it'd also be helpful if you had a fresh approach to looking at administrative procedures for the city. The Federal Administrative Procedure Act is about one inch thick, it takes up an entire volume of the code, whereas the California Administrative Procedure Act is only fifteen pages, and they both address the same subject, but the difference is, the federal rules spell it all out, but in California, they leave it up to local communities. So, you can imagine, in Los Angeles, San Francisco, they're very detailed, but in local communities like here, it's not. And certainty is very important for the public, especially in business, you need to know about the procedures, what to expect, and I think that kind of training for commissioners would be useful, so I would suggest that you address that as well sometime in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
I have two minutes and 56 seconds. Leo Bennett-Kochon, I really appreciated the wholehearted statement by councilmember Thomas about Rise and Shine. I have to confess, though, that my wife was at your store the other day getting ready for our third grandchild and wanted homeopathic, that's where kids are. Your staff is awesome, but I do have a few impulse control issues as a teacher of elementary students, and so Rise and Shine, I was really tempted to start singing the song, tried not to. That's my gift to you, because I don't sing well. I did go on the website, and I can't find the event, so I'm hoping it'll show up and easy to find. It had a lot of your past events under Google, but not your current one, just sharing. I appreciated what you talked about today and the Tribal Fire piece, and urge you to consider someday having staff bring you a report on what's called land acknowledgement. It is somewhat controversial, but you acknowledged the Native Americans that were here first, and I think it's important that we realize that even though we speak a lot about the Miwoks, this was actually at the time of the Gold Rush Nissan Territory, it was contested between the two tribal groups. Most acknowledgements include both of the tribal groups. And then finally, I have had the pleasure of falling off my AA wagon, which is Activists Anonymous, it's because my wife's not home. And so I have been to the Board of Supervisors, Eldorado County Office of Education, and the Eldorado Unified High School District meetings recently. And a common theme I hear, which I've heard here, is COVID was really, really rough on elected officials, as well as the community and the citizenship, and finding some way to heal. And there were great ideas, while you had your logo discussion about facilitators, trying to have a written record, and I know that you've had town halls, so I encourage you to consider with your other elected officials, having what I call a good citizenship workshop to help us all get back together again. And thank you for the note about the card. It does say, leave it on your seat, but I don't think that's a good idea, too much work for your hard work, Zach.
Thank you, Leo.
I have 10 seconds.
Oh.
Good evening again, Kathy Lishman. I had a couple of things I wanted to mention, and then because of a couple other things were mentioned, I have four things altogether. This is the campaign season, and I have a question about campaign signs put on public property. People, some people follow the rules and only give them where they've gotten permission, other people just put them all over town, and I didn't know if there was something that the city would request to ask people to remove their signs, or if you're just going to let it happen, but it really gets out of control. Number two is about Quartz Mountain. I know that the people that own the property do not respond to the city's letters. I can't believe that there can't be something that can be done in some way. I know from the senior center, they have seen couches go up on the hill, they've seen love seeds go up, they've seen carpet go up, and nobody really knows what's up there. And if you had a drone that could fly over, I think it would be really important to find out and to see if through legal matters, there's any way of getting the attention of the owners. I had heard that a resident got in touch with the owners and that they're doing some clearing around the boundaries, but I don't know if that's just a rumor or not. The other items, the historic workshop that you might have, I'd like to encourage you not just to have a discussion, but perhaps hire someone that is an expert or has expertise in that area to do an educational workshop for everyone. And the last one was the formula businesses, the fact that the business and property owners were surveyed, but I don't believe that any residents were, so thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Jonathan Gainsborough. I've been speaking to you almost three years now, almost every second and fourth Tuesday. I have in my hands the front page of California's oldest newspaper, The Mountain Democrat. The headline reads, "Homeless Advocate: City's Proposed Law Would Have Sent Baby Jesus Packing." It was early December 12th of 2019. We've come a long ways from me bringing up Martin Boise and the unconstitutional illegality of the city's anti-camping ordinance, to the two and a half years later, two years later, this last Christmas, to the Christmas miracle. I stood here before Christmas, and I would have wept if I could, because I felt I had failed you. And maybe I have failed you, but I tried my best. But there were, the nomadic shelter was struggling, and the city of Placerville and its leadership and its mayor came through, not just for the homeless, but for Jesus Christ who died for each one of us. I'm reading a book called The Beyond Homelessness, with 10 interviews from PhDs of different layers of society and social science and compassion. But one of them said, the most, most powerful line in the entire Gospels is Matthew 25:40, "Inasmuch as you have done it to the least of these, my brethren." I just want to encourage you that we're moving ahead now, I want to encourage you for a two-by-two. I'm very proud of, of Cleve and, and the council in extending the two nights that were open, now extending to April and helping to be there to help and work with these beautiful human beings. Some of them are dedicated Christians, as much as anybody in this room, myself or you included. So I just want to say we've made a lot of progress, but let's, let's get the emergency beds up before the fire season. If you want to bless the 60 or 70 camps up on Upper Broadway, drop off something for them for Easter weekend coming up this weekend. Leave a bag of groceries, they will share it, not hoard it. And praise God for the compassion level that is rising in the community because of you allowing compassion to rise in your hearts. Let's get a navigation center complete before the fall. They lived as animals yesterday in the rain, their sleeping bags were wet this morning.
Thank you, Jonathan.
But God loves each of them, and God loves each of you. Happy Easter.
All right, seeing no more public comment, I will, I'll close oral communication, and I'll go backwards to 8.1, written communication. Do we have anything to? Okay. All right. We have no items pulled from the consent calendar, we have no ordinances, so this brings us to item 11, public hearings, and we have two tonight. The first one is to consider an appeal filed by Kirk Smith of the decision of the Planning Commission Approval Site Plan Review 2105, allowing for exterior modifications to a single-family residence and detached garage located at 939 Lincoln Street within the Bedford Avenue Clay Street Historic Residential District. And before I start, before I start this process, I've got a little procedural summary that I will read and present. So in this case, the council is acting in an adjudicatory manner and not in its legislative capacity. I'll start the proceedings by opening the public hearing. At that time, I'll ask members of the council to publicly announce any testimony or evidence received outside of having, outside of the hearing process, which we call ex parte communications. Then I'll ask all council members to announce any conflict of interest concerning this matter, and any member with such a conflict will recuse himself or herself. Next, I'll ask staff to make his presentation on the background of the item. After staff makes his presentation and the council has an opportunity to ask questions, I'll ask the appellant and the applicant to speak. The appellant and the applicant property owner will each be given 10 minutes to make their presentations. That time may be divided up between different parties within the appellant or applicant group. The appellant will go first, followed by the applicant or property owner. Then members of the public will be given an opportunity to present testimony. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. The appellant and applicant will each have an opportunity to respond to the testimony or evidence following the public testimony, but they may not introduce new testimony or evidence, or restate their direct testimony from the outset of the hearing. They will each have three minutes for this rebuttal. Following that, we'll close or continue the public hearing at the council's option. Staff may be asked to address issues that have been raised by the appellant or in the public testimony, and the city council will deliberate on the matter and adopt findings if appropriate. The final decision may be deferred for preparation or draft findings consistent with the preliminary decision that is reached this evening. We'll now open the public hearing on agenda item 11.1, and ask any member of the council to announce any testimony or evidence received outside of the process in ex parte communication. Does any member of the council have any ex parte communications to report? I actually have one to report. I met with Mr. Smith on March 31st for a casual discussion. We discussed various local matters, and he informed me that he was appealing the Planning Commission's decisions. It was a very general discussion. Does any member of the council have a conflict of financial interest with the material effect in this case? Okay. So at this point, I'd like staff to provide us with this staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to start by giving just a, an overview of the regulatory context regarding the city's protection of historic resources. Staff prepared a document, unfortunately not, we weren't able to actually prepare a PowerPoint presentation, but it's this, this document was passed out to everybody, and if there's members of the audience that wants to follow along, there are copies of this document in the back. So this general overview will apply to both 11.1 and 11.2. So when we get to 11.2, I won't, I won't repeat this part of the presentation. So I'm going to start by, I'm going to start with the City of Placerville General Plan. You're probably aware that the general plan is typically the policy document from which land use and other regulatory ordinances and regulations flow from. It's, it's the policy document, it's adopted by, as a policy document, it's not an ordinance, but everything that flows from it, such as the zoning code, is required to be consistent with the general plan. So I'm going to go through just some of those sections of the general plan that are pertinent to 11.1 and 11.2. As you probably know, the general plan is comprised of a number of various elements, such as land use, or health and safety, or housing element. So there's two elements of the general plan that address historic buildings in Placerville. The first one is the natural, cultural, and scenic resources element, and I'm going to highlight Goal G, which states, "The goal of the city is to protect and enhance Placerville's historical heritage." And underneath that goal, there are six different policies then that further give direction on how the city is to do that. I've highlighted two of those six, I'll go ahead and I read, I'll read those two out loud, because those are the ones that are most pertinent, they all sort of apply, but those, but these two policies are the most pertinent for these two cases. Policy number one, under Goal G, is "The city shall set as a high priority the protection and enhancement of Placerville's historically and architecturally significant buildings and sites." Policy number five is "The city shall work with property owners in seeking registration of historical structures as state historic line marks and/or listing on the National Register of Historic Places." And the reason why I highlighted that particular policy is because the, the protection of historic buildings applies not only to structures that are located within one of the city's four designated historic districts, residential historic districts. It also applies to buildings or structures that the city by resolution has adopted as being historically significant, and we do have a few of those. I don't know them offhand, but we do have a few. So whether in a historic district, or whether you're an actual historic building designated by the council, then the protection ordinances apply. The next element is the community design element, and Goal C within that element says, "To protect and enhance the visual quality and neighborhood integrity of residential areas." And there are two policies under that particular goal in our general plan that are applicable to these cases. Number two is, "New construction shall be architecturally compatible with the surrounding and/or adjacent neighborhoods. This policy shall be strictly enforced in designated historic neighborhoods." So again, we have those four historic districts. This is meant to address new construction. Sometimes we have a vacant lot within an historic district, and so an applicant that wants to develop within an historic district is going to look around at the neighboring houses and try and build in context of the time period of the homes that surround it in order to maintain the overall integrity of the historic district. The third policy under Goal C is, "In order to preserve, rehabilitate, or recreate historic structures in deteriorating older residential neighborhoods, the city shall encourage alternative uses if the uses are compatible with the adjacent neighborhood and if adequate parking access are available or can be provided." So I wanted to highlight that one, because sometimes we get an application for, say, a conditional use permit for some of our larger homes that are within a historic district, and typically these may become a bed and breakfast, which are permitted by a conditional, a conditional use permit. I also wanted to highlight this, because sometimes we get persons that'll question that these, these, these historic areas are just residential. Well, sometimes there are some, some of our historic districts also have the business professional zone within them, and that allows for alternative uses that the city does allow. For example, somebody has an old home, we have some on Cedar Ravine, and they're not in a residential use, they're in a professional office use, and so that's also permitted within the historic district, so I just wanted to daylight that. So I'm going to move on to page three, and I'll move on to our zoning code. And our zoning code is ordinance as opposed to policy, so this is sort of the laws dictate how, how the city is to treat historic buildings within the city. In particular, zoning code section 10-4-10, which is titled Historic Buildings in the City. So again, it's, there's a number of different subsections of this section of our code, I'm just going to go over the ones that are highlighted. So I think section A is very, very pertinent, because that gives, that gives the city the purpose of what this zone, zoning ordinance section is supposed to do. The purpose of this section is to provide conditions and regulations for the protection, enhancement, and perpetuation of old and historic buildings in historic districts of the city and the of the city, and the perpetuation of historic type architecture within historical districts, which have special historical and aesthetic interest and value. And you can see this, this particular ordinance was adopted in 1991, which is just a year following the adoption of the city's general plan in 1990. The second one I highlighted is subsection B, and hopefully you can read that. I didn't realize that the highlight would be so dark, but I highlighted that one. I wanted that one highlighted a little different to really call it out, because this is very applicable to items 11.1 and 11.2, and that's Historic Criteria, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. Now, this, or this section was adopted in 2011, and in 2011, I was able to find some documentation. It actually replaced what was, what was deemed a obsolete set of guidelines that the city had previously used, and I believe those were from the State Historic Preservation Office. So the city in 2011, I'm assuming would have conducted involved hearings and a process to amend the zoning code to add this subsection B, that when we review activities within the historic district, that they're to comply with the standards of the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines. Subsection C defines what the historic district is. "Set historic district shall include all the territory bounded as shown in Exhibit A, which is on file in the office of the city clerk. A historic district shall be predominantly comply with these historic ordinance, with this historic ordinance." So you could jump ahead to pages five and six. I actually provided the maps of the four historic districts that we have in the city. We have, the four are Cedar Ravine Historic District, the Bedford Avenue Clay Street Historic District, which I believe 11.1 is located within that district at Coleman and Lincoln Street. And then we have the two more on page six, which are shown in the red outline, the Spring Street and Columbus Street Historic District, and then the Sacramento Street and Chamberlain Historic District, which 11.2 is located in, in that one. So going back to page three, I'll move on to subsection F, Construction and Repairs Conformity Required. All buildings which shall hereafter, constructed or altered, as to their exterior appearance within the historic districts described in subsection C of this section, shall, as to their exterior architecture, visible from the street, conform the historical criteria described in some section B of this section. Subsection B being the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines. Subsection C is then referring to the historic districts. And so one thing I do want to call out is that it's limited to the exterior of the building, so the Secretary of Interior Standards apply for much more than that. It's the, the exterior, the interior, the property itself that the building sits on. So it's a lot more comprehensive, but from the city's perspective, it's only pertaining to that elevation or that facade of the building that's visible from a street. I'll move on then to page four, subsection H, Construction and Repairs Permit Issuance. No permit for construction or alteration of any building within an area set forth in subsection C shall be issued until plans for the construction or alteration have been approved by the planning commission. So it's the planning commission then that has the authority to review a site plan review that involves modifications to a building in the context of historic. Notwithstanding anything contained in this section, to the contrary, in cases requiring any repair, to prevent substantial loss or damage to property, emergency repairs to adequately provide for health and safety may be made prior to obtaining a permit as required by this section. So you got to have a situation where the roof is bad, and we have storm, it's, we're heading into the winter season. Well, of course, the city's going to issue that, that permit and get that roof repaired, or other, could be an electrical situation or something else. Moving on to subsection J, Appeal to the City Council. Appeals of the Planning Commission Decision shall be in such a manners provided in section 10-3-7 of this title, and that's the section, that's the site plan review section, which allows then appeals to this body. The last section then I'm going to highlight is, is section N, Penalties. Every person violating any provision of this section shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and upon conviction thereof, shall be punished by a fine not exceeding $500, or by imprisonment for a term not to exceed three months, or by both such fine and imprisonment, or such person deemed guilty of a separate offense for each day or portion thereof, during which any violation of this section is committed or continued. The reason why I highlighted that is because for the most part, I would say, most of the zoning code, any violations are an infraction, and so staff finds it interesting that this particular section of the zoning code, it's considered a misdemeanor. So it's not meant to, you know, frighten anybody about draconian measures the city is looking at taking on anybody, but I found that interesting when, when again, when staff was reading through this, I go, wow, that's a misdemeanor, when really, most of the rest of the zoning code violations are an infraction. So for whatever reason, this was felt to be a, you know, a more serious violation of our code. So we've already gone over page five and six, those are your historic districts. Okay, I'm going to move on then, and move back then to text, section 10-4-10B, Historic Criteria. It's the Secretary of Interior Standards, and I highlighted standards for rehabilitation and guidelines for rehabilitating historic buildings. So there, there's sort of two different things when you look at the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines. So we are, I'm going to move on to the, the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation and Illustrated Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historic Buildings. So that, I didn't provide the council and the staff report with the entirety of that illustrated guideline. So you got the portions that I thought were most applicable to these two cases, and that has to do with wood, so in this case, the wood windows and the siding, and so those are the portions that are, that are in there. So the introduction to the standards, and I'll go ahead and read this because it's pretty important, because now we're getting into the actual standards. The standards for rehabilitation, and these are codified in section 36 Code of Federal Regulation 67, and we've, we've had discussions with members of the public about this, and there's sometimes confusion that these don't apply. Well, the city chose these, these standards and guidelines to apply to how we will view applications for modifications of buildings in our historic districts. But these also apply in the Code of Federal Regulation, so that if somebody has a, has an historic landmark, or something that's on an historic register, the property owner could then make themselves, or make application for tax credits. And so if you're going to get those tax credits from the federal government, you must meet the, the guidelines at a much higher level of standard. So I just want to, there's a little bit of a difference there. It's not like the city's doing that, but that is available out there if somebody wished to do that. So it comprises a section of the overall preservation project standards and addresses the most prevalent treatment. Rehabilitation, and I highlight that, is defined as "The process of returning a property to a state of utility," so that's use, "through repair or alteration which makes possible an efficient contemporary use while preserving those portions and features of the property which are significant to its historic architectural and cultural values." So the intent of the standards is to assist the long-term preservation of a property's significance to the preservation of historic materials and features. The following standards are to be applied to specific rehabilitation projects in a reasonable manner, taking into consideration economic and technical feasibility. So there are 10 standards that are listed in the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines, and I've always, I've, I've highlighted three of those 10, which I want to read that I think are most applicable to these cases. Number two, "The historic character of a property shall be retained and preserved. The removal of historic materials or alteration of features and spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided." Number six, "Deteriorated historic features shall be repaired rather than replaced." So there's a hierarchy there. You seek to repair first the feature on that building before you replace it. Where the severity of the deterioration requires replacement of a distinctive feature, the new feature shall match the old in design, color, texture, and other visual qualities, and where possible, materials. So it's not strictly limited to materials, but it's where possible. Replacement of missing features shall be substantiated by documentary, physical, or pictorial evidence. I'll move on now to standard nine, "New additions, exterior alterations, or related new construction shall not destroy historic materials that characterize the property. The new work shall be differentiated from the old and shall be compatible with the massing, size, scale, and architectural features to protect the historic integrity of the property and its environment." So I'll move on to section, or page nine, which now moves on to the guidelines. So those are the standards. Those are, think of the standards as more of the policy document, or the general plan, and the guidelines, maybe not as strict as a zoning ordinance, but the guidelines are to assist the property owner into applying those standards, and that's where there's a number of different sections then that apply to the material, or the, what feature it is of a particular historic building you're looking at, be it a roof, or masonry, or wood. So the guidelines assist in applying the standards to rehabilitation projects in general. Consequently, they are not meant to give case-specific advice or address exceptions or rare instances. Like the standards, the guidelines pertain to historic buildings of all materials, construction types, sizes, and occupancy, and apply to exterior and interior work, as well as new additions and the building's site and environment. And again, the city does not apply any of the standards to interior, only to the exterior and that portion of the building that's visible from a public street. So the guidelines on sustainability for rehabilitating historic buildings stress the inherent, inherent sustainability of historic buildings and offer specific guidance on recommended rehabilitation treatments and not recommended treatments, which could negatively impact a building's historic character. The guidelines provide recommended and not recommended courses of action that follows, begins with the most basic and the least invasive approaches that would help the project achieve the desired goal, before considering work that may involve more change and potentially greater impact on the historic character of the building. So on page 10, I just thought that'd be helpful, just to list all the different components of a building that the guidelines provide guidance to. And so it looks at exterior masonry, exterior wood, exterior architectural metals, roofs, windows, entrances and porches, storefronts, and then I'll skip the interior, since that doesn't apply to us, finish, features and finishes, building site, district or neighborhood setting, energy efficiency, new additions, accessibility, and health and safety. And with those last two, I'll point out that there is a, a much more involved, it's, it's greater than just the illustrated version, but a later version does assist the city with, if somebody wants to put solar on their building, how best to retrofit a building with solar and yet maintain its integrity. So it, you know, it, it seeks to allow a building then to evolve with technology, yet maintain its historic integrity. So moving on to page 11, that, that is a section that I just pulled directly out of the illustrated guidelines in regards to windows. So in regards to windows, you'll, it provides what are recommended actions to take regarding window repair, and then what, what actions that are not recommended to take that may have a negative impact on the historic integrity of the building. So moving on to the last page, and I appreciate your indulgence in this, it's a little longer than I thought it was going to be. Restoration is not a remodel or reconstruction, and I wanted just to highlight that. That was, that was a comment, I'm quoting a comment that was made by somebody at the planning commission hearing. I thought it was pretty good. But there is a hierarchy, and I think this page 12 is very important to that effect. So what's the first step that you're taking if you have one of these historic homes or or structure? It's to identify, retain, and preserve. So the guidance that is basic to the treatment of all historic buildings is identifying, retaining, and preserving the form and the detailing of those architectural materials and features that are important in defining the, defining the historic character is always listed first in the recommended column. The parallel not recommended column lists the type of actions that are most apt to cause dimination or even loss of a building's historic character. So those are negatives. So you move a little higher, the building's a little bit more disturbed, and you want to protect and maintain. So after identifying those materials and features that are important and must be retained in the process of rehabilitation work, then protecting and maintaining them are addressed. Protection is generally involves the least degree of intervention at his, and is preparatory to other work. Then we move on to repair. Next, when the physical condition of a character-defining materials and features warrants additional work, repairing is recommended. Guidance for the repair of historic materials such as masonry, wood, architectural metals, again, begins with the least degree of intervention, intervention possible. And then we have replace, and that's the last one, replacement. Following repair, in the hierarchy, guidance is provided for replacing an entire character-defining feature with new material because of the level of deterioration or damage of the materials, preclude repair. So with that, that's my general overview of how, you know, the, the city and staff looks at protecting historic buildings in accordance with our policies and regulations. So now I'm going to go ahead and move on to a brief discussion of 11, 11.1, if I may, and that is the appeal of Site Plan Review 21-05, and this is to consider an appeal of the planning commission's approval of a site plan review, an application on March 5th of 2022, which would permit the property owners, the applicant being Scott and Karen Bramhall, to modify the, the exterior of a single-family residence and attached garage located at 939 Lincoln Street that is within the Bedford Avenue Clay Street Historic Residential District in accordance with City Code section 10-4-10, which I'm sure you clearly remember because I went over, over all of it in detail. So staff is generally looking at four options. So the report attempts to characterize in daylight issues involved, and in general, the council has four options, and where we're appropriate, our city attorney will probably want to weigh in on, on some of this, since this is a quasi-adjudicatory process that we're now going through. It's not legislative. One, deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the planning commission, and you can approve Site Plan Review 2105, adopting the findings of the planning commission and the conditions of approval. Two, you could grant the appeal filed by the appellant, Mr. Kirk Smith, overturning the approval taken by the planning commission, and deny Site Plan Review 2105. A third option could be grant the appeal filed by Mr. Kirk Smith in part, and approve Site Plan Review 2105, subject to the conditions of approval as recommended by staff. So in your staff report, you see condition of approval number one. That's the only condition in in both cases where it's provided to you and underlined and strikeout, so you can see what changes were made to the original staff's recommendation. Or number four, you could approve Site Plan Review 2105 with modifications that the council feels is appropriate. So it was a direction of the planning commission in this particular case to allow the property owner the option of using alternative materials for the replacement of windows and siding, such as composite or vinyl, as opposed to only wood, as long as the architectural features are consistent with the age of the residence, subject to staff's approval. And condition number one, I'll go ahead and read through what it says, so approval. Approval of the request is to, one, an existing shed, install new board and battened siding over old siding, replace existing door, window, and exterior light. And I'll just, just out of hand, I'll say, we don't need to pay any attention to that because that shed is not visible from any street road, so we don't need to concern ourselves with that, and staff probably shouldn't have even had that in there. Subsection two of condition one, the existing two-car garage, install new board and battened siding over the existing siding, install exterior door on the back at the east elevation, side in place of existing window, and repurpose, or install window on the west side facing the house, and install exterior lighting over automatic garage door. So with respect to that, staff, I would say, the existing siding is horizontal lap siding. And so that's an instance where probably staff should have made that recommendation to be consistent with that existing siding, but staff went ahead based on historical applications that have been made, and the fact that it is common to see accessory buildings and sheds and the like with a more horizontal board and battened or lap siding that's in a horizontal orientation. But this particular staff member, after really getting more involved in the Secretary of Interior Standards, it's more than just looking around the surrounding area and what may be features you can pick and choose and select that you maybe want to put on your house. Really, I think the focus is to maintain the historic integrity of the building or structure at issue. Item number three, that's in regards to the existing house, replace original front door with similar styled material, so material, a door was removed, and replace seven original single-hung wood windows with similar style wood, vinyl, or composite. And so like-for-like wood, single-hung windows was removed, subject to staff's approval to the existing single-storied, single-family residence located at 939 Lincoln Street within the Bedford Avenue Historic District. So that was, those were the changes that were made. Staff would just, as we get further along in this, staff would request that maybe the council maybe take a closer, more definitive look at this condition of approval, and maybe provide, if the commission, or if the council is inclined to modify the commission's recommendation, that it apply a little more specificity to the staff. It shouldn't be just given to staff, but basically, what is it exactly that is approved, so that staff can then proceed into the building permit phase, rather than staff having some further discretion, which would then be subject to another appeal. So with that, that concludes staff's report on Site Plan Review 2105.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Do we have any questions for Pierre about this? Any questions?
So I have a question for you, Pierre. In regards to the board and battened siding on the garage, so you were saying that that was a staff's recommendation to approve it, but in hindsight, maybe it shouldn't have been? Is that what I gathered from your remarks?
Yes, and I'll Yes, and I'll clearly admit that. Staff looked at, you know, precedents that have been done in the past, and we also looked at, we looked at a more broad brush of that particular feature on historic buildings. And it is, it is more common to see, you wouldn't see that on the main house, except in a more very rare circumstance, but on accessory structures, you would see board and battened. But when you look at, when you look at the siding, well, at least my visual view of it, it wasn't, it wasn't in disrepair. It looked actually fairly, fairly good to me, but the applicant will have to really do a deeper dive on what the condition of that siding is. But I think to better, and again, I think there's broad discretion from, as I've read through our, all of our guidelines, there is discretion there, but I think you're always looking at trying to do your best to maintain the historic integrity of that structure. So if it was originally horizontal lap siding, then I think that's, it should be replaced with horizontal lap siding. Another issue is, what's the material, or what discretion you want to allow the material to be? Do you want composite or a hardy board because it's better fire protection? Or even vinyl, you know, which I haven't seen very much of as of late? If that, hopefully that answers your question.
Okay, well, just a follow-up question, you know, when, so there's kind of the justification that there is a lot of board and battened in the neighborhood was kind of the reason why this was allowed. Is the board and battened in the neighborhood on newer buildings? And, or is it common for board and battened to be approved to replace horizontal lap siding on outbuildings?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very, very specific question. Unfortunately, I don't have a very, very specific answer for you, so it's going to be more general. And in general, I think you would, you would see accessory structures with board and battened, or some other horizontal type siding, or, I'm sorry, vertical siding as opposed to horizontal. So obviously, there was a little more money that the original owner wanted to put in to these buildings at the time, and keep it more consistent with the main dwelling, the home.
Okay, thanks. All right, so no other, no other questions at this time? Okay. So I'd like to invite the appellant, Mr. Smith, to give his presentation, and I'm going to start a clock for 10 minutes. Kirk, do you have a clock up there?
No, I don't.
Okay.
But if somebody raises a hand or something, I'll be glad to do it. And frankly, I'll try to make it short, because you have a lot of material to go through, and I think the staff's outline does a very effective job. I'd also assume that you listened to the tapes of both hearings, and that'll save you a lot of time. I think that the staff did a good job in outlining the materials. With reference to going kind of backwards, the last subject mentioned about board and batting versus lap siding, it might be helpful if we started to define the terms. Historically, board and batting was where you might have boards, vertical boards, about 10, 12 inches wide, and there would be a slight gap, and then there'd be a strip of wood over at the battened. And that allowed for expansion contraction of the wood with the elements, and again, prevented weather from coming inside. Now, what's often done is you take a sheet of all-weather plywood, a big slab of it, and then put the strips of wood over it to make it look like board and batting. It's cheaper. Lap siding, and this is an example of something that's 100 years old, I took it off my building, and you get the idea, it's lap because it goes over each other. This is available in just a large number of combinations. So there's almost nothing out there you can't match with modern materials that are already pre-cut. You know, 100 years ago, materials were more expensive than labor. Now, it's more the other way around. So you can get this kind of material already cut out that's 16 inches wide and 16 feet long. I checked this afternoon with Diamond Lumber to find out, that's one of them that's available just on today's order for them. So that brings up another matter that you heard the staff describe, a matter of someone suggesting, well, wood windows are just too expensive, and that was unverified information. I don't know why it's not verified. Why is it that in hearings in the city of Plasterville, nobody swears to anything? So if there's conflicting testimony, you can kind of pick and choose what you want, and don't even have to explain which one, why you picked one over the other, you just pick what you want, which is what happened, because in the second hearing, I did offer conflicting information. So that's one thing, it needs to be verified. And if you have to come back a second time, so what? That's appropriate to do when you want to make sure that things are done consistent with these guidelines that have been described. We all want to convey something different from the message that otherwise might be conveyed, and that's that, go ahead and ignore the building permit requirements. Go, save yourself $100 bucks. Because the worst that's going to happen if they catch you is, you'll have to get a burger permit. And oh, by the way, if you've already changed windows, you changed historic windows from what they were to half of them vinyl, as you'll hear when you listen to those tapes, commissioners will say, well, we want it to be consistent. So they'll say, go ahead, change the whole thing. Why not do it the other way around? If you have windows that were historic or original, revert to having them all be that way, but don't use it as an excuse to abandon the purpose of the guidelines, and go ahead and adopt something brand-new. I'm less concerned about vinyl over wood, as long as it looks like the original, but these proposals don't. When you have recommendations, as you saw, and I don't want to jump back and forth, but where it's, we'll have staff exercise this, and have staff make recommendations, that's good, but it's done as a time-saving measure. The problem with that is, the public and the parties don't know what's going to be suggested, so there's no chance to put any input into whatever's been proposed. So again, when you look at those and listen to the first tape, you'll hear one commissioner very frequently talk about the cost. The issue of costs for wood versus vinyl windows came up from the commissioner, not the applicant. It should be the other way around, if at all. And then there's, as the staff report says, no verified information as to whether it was correct. It's going to depend on who the manufacturer is. So, but generally, wood can be better over the long term, and the vinyl quality depends on a number of factors, like, is it insulated on the inside of the frame? A lot of the vinyl windows sold, most of them, are not insulated. If they're not insulated, then wood becomes superior. A number of vinyl manufacturers make sure that there's insulation within the window frame. So it's hard to make those comparisons back and forth. In any event, if someone says, oh, well, it's four times more expensive, have them come back and verify it, it should have been verified in the first place. So as you'll see in that, or hear in the first proceedings, the staff says, I have no discretion, that's what the guidelines provide for. And that's really a standard. Later on, a commissioner says, it's a very simple matter, we got to follow the guidelines. Strangely enough, and I say strangely because I don't always have it explained, that person turns around and votes with the majority, without explaining why they'd shifted positions. But the minority position was the one that suggested you stick to the guidelines. And that's what I'm asking you to do, because we need some certainty. I'm a capitalist, I've owned property all my life. You can work with them. And I believe these are all good people on the commission, they work hard, they're smart people. I believe it's a matter of maybe not getting the kind of guidance that would be helpful, but that's where I'm going to let it rest, and I'll reserve the rest of my time, respecting your time, but respect for the rest of mine to reserve for rebuttal. I hope that helps you, thank you.
Are there any questions for the appellant at this time? No? Okay. So at this point, I would like to invite Scott and/or Karen Bramhall up to give their presentation.
Good evening. All right, so I'm going to try and make this quick, just because I'm realizing after hearing all this, so much of what I have to say is not relevant, but it's important. The reason I'm here, I got a letter saying, hey, you're breaking the rules. And I was doing the siding on the shed, not the garage. This was very much covered, and it's important to me because, and I seized, I stopped, even though everything I read, it appeared, and I thought I could do the work on the drilling, on this shed, because you couldn't see it from the street. So I just wanted, I felt that was important. And what's, you know, equally frustrating is, I'm now going into month five of this. So I want you guys to think about the impact of folks that are going through this, and I totally believe in the process, and I know that COVID and holidays, and then Andrew retiring, but, you know, what am I supposed to say to that? I've got stuff I need to do. But what drove this, and where we were, was before I got the notice
Excuse me, would you mind talking into the mic a little bit?
Oh, sorry, okay. What got, what happened before we got the notice is, we just moved in in August, and started getting our PG&E bills. And I'm trying to provide you guys hard facts, because, you know, Mr. Smith kind of, you know, conveyed that, you know, we didn't give anything substantial, or that, the reality is, I didn't know, because this is the first I've ever done this, so I provided what I was told to provide. So I'm going to try and give a little color to this. As you see, my PG&E bills are astounding, and they've just gone up, and it's, the numbers are incredible. And the main culprit was the door, you can see the gaps in the front door, and I apologize to the quality of the picture, it's how small it is. The windows don't close, don't lock, I've got cracks, the stuff that holds a plate of glass in, which is wafer-thin, is just all, it's in complete disarray, and the big thing is, the weights are gone. I can't even hold it up, it just, and I found this out the hard way when I smashed my finger. So it was just, and I really wasn't interested with the cost of PG&E in trying to do a, you know, refinish. And it's not cheap. And no, I don't have a quote, but I, you know, I just know from my own personal experience, but if I need to provide a quote, I'm happy to get you one. So keep going here. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time, because thankfully Pierre touched on this, but I think what's really important and the key here is, when you look at the standards, you know, my understanding, everything I thought, saw, was if I take tax incentive, or there's dollars to help fund the restoration, these are the rules you have to follow. So this took me to, you know, it's really the guidelines. And when I look at the definition of a guideline, you know, this is what I see it as. You know, it's a, you know, piece of information that suggests how something should be done. And, you know, I think that just really goes to the spirit of, you know, where we are. And so I'm going to try and touch some of Mr. Smith's comments, so particularly that the commission did not follow the Secretary of Guidelines, and that, you know, it was really kind of just, they didn't follow the spirit, and I don't want to just sit here and read it, but I think in a single word, it's all about interpretation. You know, you've got, everyone has to interpret the guidelines, and then they have to interpret what I, my application, and then they have to come up with a conclusion. And I really felt that the planning commission, you know, I found that the process that was established by the city, and was managed by the building department, and supported by a board of volunteers, did exactly what it's supposed to. It was actually, you know, I feel like he watched a completely different video, because I understand some of the comments, but at the end of the day, they came to a conclusion, and I'll try and touch on that, but, you know, this is, it isn't perfect. Politics isn't perfect, government is perfect, and, you know, I think that's the biggest problem. And it was not the results I hoped for, at all. I wanted to order my windows because it was 16 I wanted to order my windows because it was 16-week lead time when I started this. So here we are. However, honestly, it was fair, it was methodical, and the Planning Commission did exactly what it's supposed to do. There was a balance of opinions, and insight, and previous experience, because that's what it's about, you know. Clearly, a couple of gentlemen had done repairs on their own homes, so they had an idea. I saw the panel share ideas, compromise, and collaborate. And with, you know, Pierre's assistance and willingness to support it, they came to agreement, why don't you bring in samples? And that's where it's really important, because the sample quality of vinyl to fiberglass to wood, and how they rate, it's drastic, and the technology's gotten so great. And so I just envisioned, I'd probably find a product that's fiberglass, or a combination of fiberglass and vinyl, and fiberglass is so strong that you can get that narrow sash, sash, like on window, wood windows, and it's a good representation, and it looks good from the street. And a fiberglass door, to be honest, you can't tell a fiberglass door from a wood door. You just can't, when they're painted. And, you know, I was going to have to bring in a whole door, but I was willing to do that, seems silly, but that's the type of stuff, you know, that we're up against, and what they, you know, ultimately, you know, agreed on. So then, I did go ahead and provide some numbers, and it wasn't a commissioner that made the mention about cost. If you go back and read it, it was me. They asked Scott, how do you feel about it? How do you feel about the decision of going to wood? And I said, well, I don't like it, but, you know, and I started rattling off some of the reasons why, and when I brought up cost, well, here you go. That's a, and these are pre-supply chain issues. The window on the left is a vinyl, it says vinyl, the one on the right is wood. So I apologize if it's not four times, but it's about three and a quarter. It's also gone up, though. I know that, because this is from last year, when I started this. And if I actually did wood on wood, wood exterior, wood interior, it probably would be closer to four times. But, you know, here's your, your proof. And these are Pella. I had an Anderson quote as well, and I just, I liked the Pella product, because it was fiberglass, the one that I was ultimately going to get, but this is vinyl. So, this was the information I had at the time. So, you know, and I didn't know I needed to bring this or provide it, and it was, I wasn't asked for it. Then, the other thing, it, there was comments about the historical history of the house, and the work that had been done in the windows. Well, the previous owners, two back, did go through the appeal process, for the record. This didn't happen just overnight, that someone decided to install them. The middle picture shows these little three garden windows, and then around the backside of the house are the, you know, these new windows. And it went through the complete committee. So, again, this, none of this has been, you know, done without due process. And then, of course, if we go into my neighborhood, vinyl windows, fiberglass door, vinyl windows, vinyl windows, fiberglass windows, metal windows, fiberglass windows, actually, that's my next-door neighbor, they've got wood as well. This house is actually unique across the street. It looks like wood original. It's actually metal, and they're about 10 years old. And they're painted. And this picture doesn't do it justice, but the reality is, is you can find solutions out there that give that appearance that you guys want, but it's a medium and a ground that's comfortable for me. And I think what's really important, all my neighbors are so fantastic, they're all very aware of what's going on, and they're all so apologetic. But, you know, the reality is, what, the common theme is, good God, I'm not going to go through this. So what you have is deteriorating buildings, or they do nothing, or they do it behind your back and don't pull a permit. And so that brings to the point of the garage and the board and batten. My house was built in 1881, next door is a home that's 1884, they have a board and batten garage. They might as well tear it down, because it's in complete disarray, and it's rotting, the gutters are hanging off, and why haven't they done anything? Well, they can't afford it. And so, but that board and batten is so common, there was actually a, an accessory building on the property at one time behind the garage that was board and batten. And if you saw my original application that I turned into Pierre's department, it had that picture, and it spoke to it. So I was, you know, the board and batten is more common than you think. And it was just done really because of cost. And just for the record, the board and batten I did on my shed is not sheet, I did individual pieces. So, you know, and I went over the existing stuff. So, you know, I'm, I'm trying to do it right, and not cut corners, but, you know, this is the situation I'm in. Across the street, vinyls. So lastly, just some final words. There's an article for everything. I could probably go on and find an article about how great city council meetings are, and I could probably go on the internet and find how bad city councils are. You know, my point is, I can find documentation that speaks about how great vinyl is, how great wood is, or how great fiberglass is. And it just, you know, less maintenance, don't have to paint in a lot of cases, but fiberglass windows, you can paint now, they're available. They don't warp, they're weather resistant, they're much more rigid, they have, they can mimic the sash size, and sometimes the texture. There's just a lot of options, and that's kind of what I think the, what the council came up with, as they did their decision. And then lastly, you know, I think what's important is, there's really only one person that's complained about this with the appeal. I think that's a huge win, and everyone I spoke to has been really supportive. No one's come to my door, I haven't seen anything on social media. I'm only one person, one data point, but I think it's important to mention, because, you know, it really is, perfection doesn't exist in a, you know, in what is very much, you know, imperfect world. So, I'll stop there.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
I have one. You, you started it prior to getting a permit.
The shed, yes.
The shed, okay.
Not the garage, never touched the garage.
Okay. And so what we see, having the board and batten on it, is the shed?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so you have not started board and batten on the garage at this-
No, as soon as, like I said, I thought it was okay for me to do the work, because it wasn't visible. As soon as I got the notice, I called, spoke to Pierre's team, and I seasoned the system.
Okay.
I have not done anything since. I still haven't done anything.
Okay. The explanation on the windows, I think, is very thorough. I'm curious why you chose to go over the existing siding on the garage, or you plan to go over the existing siding, instead of-
I was going to go over, just because it's less work. I, I'm, a lot of the work I do myself, so I didn't want to have my garage and all my goods, you know, exposed. And, you know, it, it's possible, because, but the reality is, is that siding's there. It's not in great shape, and the pricing I've got, it's, to get something that matches, has to be milled, and it's not cheap. But I don't have a quote, but, you know, the idea of it going down the street and it's readily available, I haven't found that. And I've spoke to Diamond, they said they had to have it milled.
Is it rotting, or what, what is the condition?
Down at the base it's rotting, it's just, really what it is, is it's splintering, it's bowing, and there's, I don't know how many coats of paint, so it's just really hard, it's not aesthetically pleasing anymore.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just, it's just old, you know, and then if I try and do the repair, I think it's going to be hard to get this, the wood off without it breaking. But, you know, again, I, we'll see.
Okay. All right. No other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
At this time, we'll invite members of the public to speak on this item, if they so choose, and they, just as a reminder, you have three minutes to make your comments.
You know, I've driven by this house, it's so cute. And I was at the, and I've listened to the meeting of March 1st, I wasn't in attendance at that one. I actually listened to it a couple times to get it up, take it all in, and I think the applicant and his wife, who's not here tonight, are really lovely people, and I think, actually, they were more willing to comply with things than what the Planning Commission wanted them to. They made offers to do things that they were encouraged not to do, and I was really appalled by the proceedings at the Planning Commission in this instance. So many issues were brought up that, to my way of thinking, are totally irrelevant to the matter at hand. And I look forward to us having this training coming up between City Council and the Planning Commission on these historic issues. I, I really don't think it's part of the Planning Commission's decision to say, what is the market value if windows match or don't match? That's not their business. I don't think it's the Planning Commission's business to talk about efficiency and fuel costs and such. The, the Secretary of the Interior's guidelines aren't talking about what's the most fuel-efficient type of window, door, or whatever. Of course, those are important, but the Planning Commission's role, I think, is, is pretty clear, and it's really not rocket science. That, we've seen, Pierre made a great presentation about what the requirements are of the Secretary of the Interior, and if they would just focus on that, and make their decisions based on that, it would be so much simpler than how they expand into all these other various issues that really isn't their purview to be basing a decision on. I think one Planning Commissioner's been very clear and concise throughout as to what the standards need to be followed, stated simply, stated at the beginning, stated at the end, and that one Planning Commissioner has been ruled against. But I think that she makes a lot of sense in what she says. And, and also, again, what Pierre brought up, it's really not that difficult, and if we want to start getting into comparing finances, then we need to have some actual cost estimates brought up, for people to say, we'll do this and not that, because this is more expensive than that. And first of all, I don't think it's for Planning Commissioners to be providing economic guidance. No one asks them, and that's not their specialty, and their, their role, I think, is to rule on what the ordinances of the city are, and what the Secretary of the Interior's rules are, and let the applicant bring up these issues. It does say-
Thank you, Ruth.
Am I done?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's going to be interesting to see your wisdom as you make your decision. Listening to everybody, obviously, there's many good points, and, you know, it's a quasi-judiciary, which means it's a bit adversarial. But from my perspective, I'm not a capitalist, more of a socialist, but I do own buildings, and I've always bought them at really cheap prices, because, as the realtor likes to say, they just need tender, loving care. And, so I've always done my own labor, and I've enjoyed retrofitting and rehabbing, rebuilding the weights, and looking at the pulleys, I mean, it's just so historical doing all of that. But I know technology advances, and that there is the possibility of a compromise, as we shared, that there's materials out there, but they usually cost more, that can mimic wood. I think that the guidance that was shared by Pierre, that's the critical piece, and I'm glad you're going to have a workshop, that you're able to try to get everybody on the same page. I personally love wood, I think it's our greenest option, we're trying to bring back mills and all of that, and it's fiberglass and vinyl and all of those things that have so much sunk costs. To me, that's why they used it back then, because it was a locally sourced material. But good luck with your decision. I await to watch you in action. Thank you.
Thank you, Lea.
Susan Rodman, resident of Placerville. I am familiar with this neighborhood, because I have a friend who lives on the same street. And some of the homes there are in great shape, and some of them are in not-so-great shape. And if you're going to take a historic home and restore it, then that's what you need to do, and that's what you need to look at. And I can relate to the PG&E bills. I bought a nonhistoric home in Placerville, and it had aluminum sliding windows on it, and they might as well have been storm windows only, because it was cold from the waist down. My daughter was only four, so she was cold all the time. And when you buy a house, you take a, you make a list of, okay, here's the things that you're probably going to need to do. And I said, okay, these windows are going to have to be replaced, and that was about number 10 on my list. After the first winter, it went to number one, and we did it the next year, and we put in wood windows, Anderson wood windows, double paint. And it made a huge difference. I put encasement windows, because they closed better than sliders, and it was a perfect fit for the architecture of the house, and they have been wonderful ever since, and it's been 30 years. And the next winter, PG&E was sending out notices to people, saying, your bills are probably going to triple this winter, because it's been exceptionally cold, but don't worry, we'll work with you. My bills were the same as the year before, because the windows were replaced. And the next thing I did was put insulation in the attic, but that's a whole different ballgame here. But, they do make wood windows, and they do make them in the styles that go with historic architecture. And sometimes, you can rehab old windows, and sometimes you really can't. And so to replace them with windows that are double painted, so you have some efficiency, but look the same as the old wood windows, okay, is that the-
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds, okay. I think that's an appropriate thing to do.
Thank you, Sue.
But I do not like plastic and fiberglass and stuff. I go with wood.
Thank you.
Hi, Sue Taylor, building designer. So, you know, I've said before that I've, I design buildings a lot in Hapman Bay, and they look historical. I mean, there are, I work with contractors that actually go after that look to, and people think that these are old buildings. There's so many materials now that are out there, and then I think about, when you look at a building, these historic buildings, the windows and doors are really what make those buildings, that give them that feel of what you're looking at. And it's so important, it's, it's all in your design standards, it's all in the, you know, the guidelines and the manuals and the standards that the city possesses that they ask people to follow, it's all there. And I, you have a really good, you know, inside the part where it talks about windows, a great explanation of why and what you can do with the historic windows. These windows, the original old windows, are from old-growth wood. It's, you can't replace that, and you can't replace that look. You can restore them if they're, you know, I've restored windows from the 1800s that are amazing, the, the Hangman Building has the original wood windows in them. It's, it's, you know, people that don't, aren't in this field, it seems overwhelming, it just seems easy to go to Home Depot and get a vinyl window, because they say that that's going to be better. But they're not always better, they don't last as long. Like I said, I have windows from the 1800s that are still not leaking air, and they're amazing. So I would just suggest that you ask your Planning Commission to stick to these standards, and if people, I've always said it'd be great to give a guide to people about doors and windows, and help them when they come in, so it's not so overwhelming, because it's just the knowledge of not knowing where to go or what to do to replace those doors and windows. And, like I said, there are options, and I would suggest that you stick to these. I know that when we, I know Michael was on the Historic Advisory Board, I think we were the only building that actually went through that process, and it was pretty stringent, and we weren't even in the residential historic district. So, I didn't, sorry, I didn't know, we didn't have a timer. But anyway, I just ask that you stick to the standards, and I, I have been at the Planning Commission when they said, don't worry about how you vote, because if they don't like it, they'll just file a lawsuit, and then we'll resolve it then. And I think that's a really bad model for people to have to come through and not know what your standards are, and if they don't, do they mean something or not? So, thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Howdy, folks. Edwin, resident of Placerville. I just, you know, hearing all the people talk about varying degrees, I just want to stress that there seems that there should be a level of compromise between the city and the owners of these historic buildings. I mean, we all remember the House on Cedar Ravine that had to be demolished. That had a number of historic issues along with it. And in the end of the day, it deteriorated so much, became a danger, and it had to be demolished. And as the applicant said, he's got some stuff in his neighborhood that's deteriorating beyond what you can do about it. And, I mean, the recommended things to do to your house in maintaining your windows and things like that, that's not required in any way. And so if it's, you know, too much to go, if there's no compromise between the city and the homeowner, it can go down that way. And, I mean, I don't want to see my city fall apart around me, and I don't want to see the historic buildings fall apart. So if there's no way to compromise with the city, they don't really have to do anything. There's no way to, at least that I can see, to enforce the city to be like, hey, you have to do this. So if there's no compromise there and it's just astringent, this is how it has to be, I don't see where, you know, hey, I'm just going to let this fall apart or move away and leave it to the next person. And so I just would hope that you guys would just compromise. I mean, I don't want to look bad either. Historic buildings are fantastic. Don't get me wrong. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Lishman, Placerville. The planning commission and the city council have a responsibility and an honor to protect our historical heritage and to follow our general plan, our design guidelines, and the Secretary of Interior standards. I appreciated the presentation that staff made. It was very informative, and the handout was excellent. Community character deteriorates slowly over time. Sometimes it seems as if a planning commissioner is actually representing the applicant at these meetings, thereby that chips away at the character of Placerville, when it's their responsibility to follow the established guidelines. The history of our community links us to our past. It tells us who we are and where we came from. The more a community does to enhance and preserve what makes it unique, the more reason there is to value and preserve. I urge you to grant the appeal.
Thank you, Kathy.
Alan Hyena. I'll be heard here in a short, brief period of time, but I'd like you folks to also consider this, if you would. These homes were built back in the 1800s, probably not much of a planning commission going back then, maybe not even permitting, but they're historical relics at this point. And there's a reason for that. People owned their property. They wanted to do something with their property, and they did. And it's an important thing to consider, personal property rights. When a city or any county takes on a goal in which to be so overly astringent that people can't afford to actually improve their property, they likely won't. So we hear a lot about this stuff about pricing tonight, but I can tell you, pricing is real. Costs are real. True divided light, wood windows, dual pane, meeting today's energy, are indeed three to four times higher than vinyl windows. And so we really should be looking at something that makes at least a reasonable approach to this, that all people can use and actually not run away from their home, like was just suggested. Anyway.
Thank you.
Good evening, council and Mayor Taylor. I feel compelled to add to the conversation for a lot of reasons. I have lived in historic homes for most of my life, and in Placerville for decades, in fact, and have grappled with all the issues that are being discussed this evening. Basically, owning an older home is the proverbial money pit. You can't throw money at it fast enough because the older houses need the kind of repair that is costly. When the historical ordinance was put in place, and I'd like to speak to that as well, consider myself the ghost of historical ordinance passed, because I was on the original committee of homeowners who wrote that ordinance. And the reason why was that we felt that the historical legacy of residential Placerville was of tantamount importance, and it was clear that our structures were slipping away by means of aluminum sliders and T-111, that sort of thing. And we all felt as homeowners that to preserve to the fullest degree possible the historic structures, while it would be expensive at the moment, it would enhance our property's value as well as our neighborhoods, as well as our town. So there was, I believe, a much larger picture to the cost issue than the cost of any particular component. And I have to say, when we had our house for all those years, it needed new windows because it'd been remodeled years ago with steel windows in that historic home. We couldn't afford it, so we didn't do it. And a lot of times, that's what you do. You wait until you can restore with the proper materials. And that was another point I've lost. But the economics of the situation, I think, are a bigger picture than can I afford this window at this point in time, is the integrity of the structure, the legacy that those historic structures give to Placerville in this historic district. And I understand that there is degrees of differences, small improvements versus large improvements. So that's always the legitimate subjective component to the decision, in my point of view. Am I at three minutes?
You have 30 seconds.
I have 30 seconds. So it does seem like the decision can be made based on the impact of the home and the improvement. But I'm here to speak for, I think, the population in general, who holds the historical value, the legacy of Placerville, to be a good thing.
Thank you.
All right. I see no other public comment on this. So, and I'm going back to my appeal script, so bear with me right here. So we'll proceed to the closing comments. Oh, no, no, sorry. Okay, yeah. This is my first appeal, so just bear with me. All right, so we are now going, we're not going to ask any, we don't have any questions for staff regarding the public comments. So we'll proceed to the closing comments by the appellant. Just a reminder, the closing comments is an opportunity for the appellant to respond to the testimony or evidence, but not to introduce any new testimony or issues, or to restate any of the direct testimony that was provided. And you have three minutes to make your rebuttal.
I hope I'll use, again, less time than allotted and tell you that Mr. Scott raised some very good points. They're points you should consider when you have your legislative hats on in a few weeks or some other time. 12 years ago, did we think about fire being a big threat? Did we think about energy costs as crippling as they might be now? Those are all appropriate considerations for you look at when you consider modifying the guidelines. But that's not why we're here. You are, as you appropriately said, in adjudicatory role. You're here to make decisions about whether the guidelines were followed. It should be clear they were not. It's true, there's all kinds of material out there that are fire-resistant, some may even cement. It looks like wood. But we're talking about what the guidelines allow for. And, yes, vinyl windows and all kinds of triple-pane windows can be very effective, and they can be wood-framed and look exactly like the ones you removed. So your role tonight, as you appropriately said, is adjudicatory. But I do think in this time that you've provided, you've seen some issues that need to be examined. For example, a number of times, the statement was made, well, that property is not on the inventory. As I've told you, that inventory was done in the 1980s. I don't know if the internet was even around then. But it was always, the people who were involved in it told me, just a start. It needs to be completed. If it's not on that list, that's maybe supportive but not dispositive of whether it's an historic building or not. Please make that change. Also, you've heard people say, or you will, I'm sure here it said, hey, I didn't know. I was clueless. I didn't know that this was an historic property, had to follow these guidelines. Lots of things you can do. You can make sure that land records, I don't know if they show that when you buy property. You can make sure letters go out in the area, all kinds of things. There are things you can do to make sure the guidelines are easier to follow, that any high school student can figure it out. Our staff is up to the gills in work. I don't know how they do what they do. You can get fellowships, internships to help them make it easier to follow. But again, your role tonight, thank you, is adjudicatory. It needs to be set back to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
All right, and now it's time for the applicant to have an opportunity to provide his rebuttal for three minutes.
This is why I never got into politics. I just couldn't do what you guys do, seriously. I'm just wired black and white. There's no in-between, and that's the challenge you have. I honestly don't know what else I could add. I mean, there's merit on both sides. And unfortunately, when this came around, and the only thing I'll share is, getting to this point, I think, is part of the problem. It's taken so long to really come up with a process, a procedure, and methodology, and so we're so behind. So you've got all this legacy that you look at. I think the only thing that I'll add to what Mr. Smith said was that I found when I went to the website to figure this stuff out, it was clear as mud. And so this isn't just about, you know, figuring out what we're going to do today as it relates to my case and Alan's. It really is, you know, the process is broken on so many levels. And, you know, just this document that Pierre put together, it's great, but it's still not fully clear for me. And I'm not a lawyer, because, you know, when I looked at all this, the standards were based on if I took money, a grant, et cetera. Well, I didn't. So I'm like, okay, I'm going to the guidelines. And then that's the whole thing. It's all up to interpretation. So it's not just about figuring out, you know, what you're going to do. I think more importantly, how are you going to manage it? How are you going to regulate it? And really have it spelled out for, you know, folks that, you know, this isn't a strength of theirs, or just don't have the time. I mean, there was a lot of time and energy spent on this, and I have far more important things I'd rather be doing than, you know, because all I want to do is, you know, update my house. So, you know, best of luck with, you know, I don't know how you're going to do it.
Thank you.
All right. So we will close the public hearing. Thank you all who spoke on this issue. Do we have any requests for staff to provide additional background? Any questions of staff at all?
Just for a moment, what, you know, when we talk about a quasi-judicial, can you kind of tell me a little bit more about that?
Yes. So the difference between a legislative decision and a quasi-adjudicatory decision is this. A legislative decision, the council is free to make any decision it wishes based on its policy. So general plan amendments, zoning code amendments, those are legislative in nature, and you decide whatever is best for the city. On the other hand, quasi-adjudicatory decisions, such as those that we have here, require you to review the already-established rules and regulations that the city has adopted. In this case, we have specific standards for site plan review. We also have the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines. So reviewing those two guidelines, standards, ordinances against the project application, you are supposed to make your decision. So it has nothing to do about personal preference or your vision for the city, but whether you believe that compliance has been achieved. This case is a little bit unique in that the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines do allow, as does our ordinance, do allow some discretion by you. And as long as you can make findings to support the reasons for your decisions, then you can exercise that discretion.
All right. All right. So council members, what are your thoughts?
Pierre, could you go over the findings that the planning commission made in order for them to approve this project? Because we have that into the record, because they did use their discretion in that case. But I just wanted to see what, we could daylight this.
Sure. The findings that the planning commission made are contained within Attachment 2. Those would be the planning commission minutes of March 1, 2022. So if we turn to that attachment and look at the minutes, starting at Page 1, they made the following findings. A, the project request is described, conditioned, and presented in the application documents and analyzed by staff in its report to the planning commission, is exempt from the environmental review pursuant to Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act, and that the project involves minor alterations to an existing residence that is not listed on city, state, or federal historic resources inventories, and that no expansion of the residential use is proposed. So there's your sequo finding. Finding B, the project site, 939 Lincoln Street, contains a single-family dwelling with 1,069 square feet of floor area, a detached 18-foot-by-20-foot garage, and a 20-foot-by-14-foot storage shed that are located within the Bedford Avenue Clay Street Residential Historic District, but these structures are not listed in the city's historic resources inventory, the State Register of Historic Places, or the Natural Register of Historic Places. And then C, the project request is conditioned and is described and presented in the application documents and analyzed by staff in its report to the planning commission, is consistent with the Placerville General Plan Community Design Element Goal C, in that the visual quality of the proposed exterior additions involving windows and siding are compatible with the visual attributes of the neighboring structures within the historic district. D, the project request is conditioned and is described and presented in the application documents and analyzed by staff in its report to the planning commission, is consistent with Criteria 8, Community Design, of the Site Plan Review Ordinance 10-4-9, and that the project is found to be consistent with the goals and policies established in the Community Design Element of the General Plan. And then last finding is Finding E, the project request is conditioned and is described and presented in the application documents and analyzed by staff in its report to the planning commission, is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance 10-4-9, Site Plan Review 10-4-10, historic buildings in the city, and the development guide that are intended to protect the integrity of the residential historic district and individual structures located therein. And then there's Section 3, which are the conditions of approval. And the conditions of approval is that shown, Number 1, which describes the project as shown as an entirety, is approved by the planning commission. If you want to see- If you want to see what that condition of approval looked like, as recommended by staff, that's then contained within the staff report on page... Oh, it starts at the beginning of page one at the bottom. It's italicized, and so you'll see the underline and strikeouts of that condition and how it was modified when it was approved by the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Pierre.
You're welcome.
I was just trying to set the, sort of set the stage for what they ruled on as we're looking at the, what we want to do here.
Do you want to go ahead or?
Yeah.
You know, 41 years ago, the city established the historic districts, and they decided to use the state standards minus the back of the building and then interior of the building, just the front of the building. But that's what they decided 41 years ago, and that's what, in my opinion, we need to look at. I understand a lot of the concerns, but people, you knew you were buying a house in a historic district, just like you know if you're getting into an HOA or CC&Rs, you know? You decide where you're going to buy a house and accept that those are the rules that you're going to have to follow. In my opinion, if we're going to accept the Planning Commission's decision, then we have to decide what rules we're going to follow, and those are not the state standards, you know, which is a whole other discussion. And, you know, if, you know, this council wants to, you know, develop what those new standards are going to be, but these are the standards, and this is what everyone agreed to in those neighborhoods and what they would do. And so I have a hard time getting there with not following our own rules. That's where I'll start.
This is, well, I laugh, this is a serious matter. And it feels like, to a certain extent, the Planning Commission is trying to be half-pregnant here. They, you know, they want to have, they want to follow the rules. Their process, their program, their responsibility to the city is to take a look at the guidelines and the policies that are set in place and make determination to that extent. There are certain areas within these guidelines that allow for flexibility, and that's the half-pregnant part. You know, when you, when you get to the point where you're providing a recommendation or your findings that, well, you can use vinyl, you can use aluminum, or you can use wood, it's kind of like saying, well, just do whatever you want. And that, and that, to me, is challenging. You know, we do have, and you are purchasing homes inside these historical districts, we have rules for the historical districts, whether you like them or not, whether I like them or not, that's what they came up with, and that's what our community decided on quite some time ago. And we haven't changed those. However, it appears that the Planning Commission has diminished those over time by having these, making these decisions to allow certain differences and changes within the, within the other applicants that have come before them. And I think one of the issues I have with this whole thing, and what brought it to my attention, is are we going to have historical districts or are we not? And I think we need to make that decision, but that's not what's on the agenda tonight. The decision is to decide whether we're going to affirm the Planning Commission's decision to, you know, waive a lot of the responsibility of having a historical home in a historical district. And I'm interested here, further comments, because I get the fact that it's more expensive and that it's challenging and that, you know, and then I also, my mind goes in 100 different directions. There are a lot of products out there that can imitate those that are, that are out there now, that are less expensive, but, you know, unless you look at it, you can't really tell there's a difference. And so there's all these gray areas, which, to a certain extent, these allow for that. But at what point do you draw enough? And I'm still battling with that. I haven't, I didn't, I didn't come into this, I came into this really interested in seeing where we go with a lot of questions and, you know, wondering where we're all going to kind of chime in on this. So I'm going to leave it at that for now. I'll probably have more in a minute.
Yeah, no, I, same, same thing, Councilman Thomas. And I think I'm the only one here, I've been on Historical Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, and then on City Council. So I have a, kind of a long history here on this item, and I think even when we had the Historical Advisory Committee, I think we spent the most time talking about windows. And I think Pierre had brought in for us a shippo person to have us really walk through the standards and, you know, really gain a good feel for them. And Sue's right, she was probably, I think, our guinea pig on a project coming through Historical Advisory Committee at the time, which is, I think, now more than, more than 10 years ago. And it was always a frustration for me on Planning Commission windows, because we always ended up approving windows. And I had even made a motion at one point to say, well, if we're just going to approve them rote, you know, it was almost rote at this point, then let's just give that delegation back to staff, because you're wasting everyone, you're wasting staff's time, you're wasting the applicant's time by coming to this and then just kind of pushing it through. They didn't go anywhere, but it was just, you know, kind of my level of frustration with us not really living up to the spirit or even the law of what we had. So as far as I know, this is the first time that it's reached the City Council's level. So while there may have been precedent at the Planning Commission level where these have continuously gone through, it's really now, you know, incumbent upon us, I think, to align us with the standards that were passed into law. And I appreciate two former mayors speaking and bringing some of that perspective to us as well. So that we kind of reclarify that. Now, whether or not, as I believe a couple of people mentioned, we want to put on our legislative hats and relook at all these, that's certainly something we can do and look at. But today, we have to look at what the law says and what we've adopted as a city. And so I, in my mind, I'm having a hard time finding a way to uphold the Planning Commission's findings at this point, especially as they did not take staff's recommendation on this one as well. I think they even want to step further, and you can see that by the strikeouts and what Pierre had read into the record as well. So that's kind of my statements for now. You know, and I, I feel, I mean, believe me, I live in one of these houses. My house is on the historic inventory. My house was built in 1889. I still have single-pane windows, and they're terrible right now. I haven't wanted to spend all the money, I think, that was mentioned as well, but I will eventually do it. I know there's a couple of people in town that are actually really great at doing this, but I've made other improvements. I've done interior storm windows to help with my situation, and it's certainly been very helpful. It's an expensive endeavor, but it certainly was something that I knew I was getting into when I bought that house. And I was proud to be able to own it and to be able to take on that money pit, in knowing that, you know, when I finish paying it over a four-year period, I'm probably starting again on the other side of it again to, you know, all over again, because that side's degraded on the south side or something to that effect. And it's, you know, it's something you go into when you're owning an old home, and I think that's, that's part of the bargain you made when you, when you buy into a historical district. And I want to really see our historical districts preserved, you know, as we see SB9 and SB10 passed, and that there are some off-ramps for historical districts. You know, I want to look at even other areas in our community where we may have other, you know, areas, because Kirk was right. I mean, we, it was an incomplete process that happened in the 1980s. I know I've mentioned this before, where I like to allocate some of our ARPA funds to redo our historical inventory, because we really need to update that. It's been 40 years. It was incomplete, and we have a raw opportunity, I think, to actually improve on that for decades to come, just like we've used this sort of initial inventory as we've gone forward. So those are, those are my comments for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Patty, do you have anything?
You know, one thing, and I, one thing I'm thinking of especially is the comment that was brought up about, do we just let them rot? You know, and do we look at this? And I'm thinking of one house in particular on Coloma Street, right near the old sanatorium and now, that house just was decrepit for years and years, and there were a couple others that were in pretty bad condition. And I, I'm wrestling with, as so many other things, times have changed, and it's not as easy to adhere to these guidelines as it was possibly when these guidelines were presented. I don't, I don't know. But, so I'm kind of coming from that angle, and also from an owner of a building that's got wood that I am replacing, and it, the cost is astronomical. And so I kind of think we have to weigh both, both sides of it. What do we want? Are we going to have enough people come in and buy these homes that they can afford to do, like you're saying, and Marion said, they just didn't do it. And so I think we have to approach it from different angles. That's my opinion.
I've got to say, I'm very sympathetic to the applicant. I would hate to be in a position where I'm in this setting after five months of waiting to, for, you know, a local governing body to decide whether or not I can put the windows in that I want to put in. That's, you know, and this is the reality of what a historic district means. A lot of people are all for historic districts. I've even heard suggestions to make the entire town a historic district. It is a trade-off. I mean, there are, you know, there are real pros and cons for property owners and for the community, especially when you start talking about buildings that maybe would not be getting maintained because it's so expensive and prohibitive to do so. That being said, we do have to look right now at the rules that we have on the books. That is our duty tonight. And I have a really hard time seeing how vinyl has a place on a historic building. And I also recognize that this practice has been widespread, and changing lap siding to board and batten has been widespread. And it's hard to kind of reconcile treating these applicants different than the applicants that have come before them and had their projects approved, but as Michael said, this is the first time it's come to the City Council. And I'm also struggling with the fact that there is some discretion built into the guidelines, and I think that that is where the problem lies. You know, what, it's all based on subjectivity, and that really is a horrible system for people that are trying to get projects done, to have their proposals looked at by different eyes and come to different outcomes all the time. It's clearly, I think, we need to establish some clear guidelines on how these are going to be treated going forward. We have a couple of options here. We could partly approve the Planning Commission's decisions. We could approve it with modification, or we could grant the appeal. There's a couple of issues at stake with this one, the windows being one, and also the board and batten siding. You know, that's one that we've spoken less about, but I feel like is more consequential, really, in some ways. So, I don't know.
If we grant the appeal, what does that mean? To the applicant?
Granting the appeal means denial of their site review permit?
And they'll have to come back again.
Correct.
And circle back around.
Correct.
Just want to make sure I understood that.
Look at option three, because we can also grant the appeal in part and approve 202001 subject to the conditions of approval as recommended by staff. We don't have to just throw it all out.
Or we can approve the site plan review with modifications as well.
Yeah, lots of, lots of options. I just, I did watch those Planning Commission meetings, and I have to say, it was emphasized by the Planning Commission that everything is just guidelines, and I don't think that that's entirely true. You know, when you read through, there are standards, and the standards are specific in the like-for-like replacement. And so, you know, to sit here and debate, I mean, I'm looking at black and white, like-for-like replacement, and that's what we've agreed to do up to now. I understand all the other issues, but that's an entirely different conversation for a different day if we want to change how things are. This is what we said we do.
I might have a suggestion for the council to help narrow the scope of your review. So staff presented you with a packet that provides a background of the information presented. So on page seven, you'll find the introduction to the standards, and there's three specific sections that have been highlighted. And I think that if you were to review those, that's item number two, six, and nine. And if you focus whether the application comports with those three specific standards, and then I'm going to make it a little bit more difficult for you, because the standards, if you read the second shaded paragraph here, it says that the standards are to be applied to specific rehabilitation projects in a reasonable manner, taking into consideration economic and technical feasibility. There's also a section in the standards that contemplates natural hazards, and so, you know, with Placerville having fires a natural hazard, that's another consideration that you can make. So if you really focus on these three specific standards and compare them to what the applicant has requested, then the council can determine whether and if, or to what extent, it wishes to adopt or modify the Planning Commission's decision.
I hear what you're saying. I sit on the FIRE MSR for LAFCO, and I've learned a whole bunch about more fire than I have before. And, you know, I thought of all those things, and then I also went back and I read the ordinance 1280, you know, where they came up with all this stuff. And trying to balance the two, I don't, I have a hard time saying we're going to rewrite and redo things here on the spot, that we're not going to follow what we said we were going to follow. We're not going to follow the, you know, the spirit of the intent to preserve these historic districts.
But Mona, whatever decision we make, I mean, it's presidential as well, correct?
Well, a couple, there's two really appropriate responses to that. The bases for which you find, you make your findings today should be applied uniformly and not arbitrarily to this applicant. Secondly, because the ordinance itself is a legislative act, this council could make modifications to the ordinance, and if it does that, then whatever decision you make today might not have any bearing in the future. So it's limited to the ordinance as drafted today.
Understood. Thank you. So Pierre, on your, on the original staff recommendation, you had an approval, correct? I mean, aside from the strikeouts that, that the Planning Commission recommended, or no? The original staff recommendation?
Yes, if you look on, if you look, start looking at the bottom of page one of the staff report, it's continued on the top of page two. It'll show underlines and strikeouts of those changes that were made by the commission. Everything else then were staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission. So you can clearly see what was changed.
Gotcha. Although you've come to a different thought process on the board and batten since, as you... you further studied the standards?
No, I haven't. I'll clearly admit that it was probably an error on my part when I made that recommendation, basically just out of hand, allowing them to change the horizontal wood lap siding on the garage to a vertical board and batten, or some other vertical type of siding. Because I was looking at, basically, the neighborhood as a whole, knowing that many times you'll see accessory structures with board and batten, or a horizontal orientation of some kind of siding. Whereas I spent a lot more time involved in this appeal and really read through the guidelines, I educated myself that there's a real effort to maintain the integrity of the historic buildings on that site. You're not looking at other buildings as example to deviate from what the original historic building had provided, or what it was originally. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you. Well, again, I'm going to go back. I'm just having a hard time, you know, I know we have other, we have options, we have many options in front of us. But if I'm looking at what's in front of us today, I'm having a hard time coming to a, what I would call an off-ramp here, you know, for this, just one particular appeal. So with that, I'll...
Can I, before you move on?
Yep.
What I, I mean, I do really feel for the delays and how long this process has been for the homeowner. And if there's a way to do option four and approve the site plan review with modifications, which we've got the language for the site plan approval right here. So the modifications might be to strike vinyl or composite, for instance, or something along those lines. At least that way, the property owner could still go forward without having to resubmit another application and come back to the planning commission.
I'm in favor of that. That's what's going to be my next statement. So, thank you. So when we look at this, and we look at doing a modification to the, we choose option four and we do the modification, do we, because essentially, we're just basically changing it back to what the guidelines are, and placing that upon the applicant. And that's perfectly within our...
So...
You know what I'm saying? So let's say we strike the word vinyl and composite, and we stick to wood, similar style wood.
You can do that.
Okay.
Yes.
But would the modifications, would that be what Pierre was talking about, that he would rethink his, on the board?
Board and batten.
Yeah.
Well, we could also provide a modification to that.
So Pierre, in your evaluation of this, in reviewing the board and batten versus the horizontal lap, your recommendation, based on your evaluation, is that the horizontal lap should be what is on the garage, historically speaking? I would agree with that. When you look, when you look at the Secretary of Interior standards, you're to do whatever you can. There's that hierarchy I talked about earlier, when I went through the long involved analysis of the different regulatory structures that we have. So it's hard for me to go from what would constitute, because basically, it should be repaired. If it can't be repaired, then you move to the next step. Maybe you are removing, as the applicant pointed out, it was my impression that it was only some of the horizontal boards that were, that were near the ground that needed to be replaced. And then it enlarged that that's not really possible, because you pull one board out, I guess it's going to interfere with the other boards. Well, you know, to what extent that is, I'm not really sure. But I would say the onus is on the applicant to show to what extent that the building has deteriorated. First of all, the where replacement of, just repair is not, does not work. And then can you just replace a portion of it? And then if it's so bad that you're going to replace the entire siding, and then at what point do you change then the orientation of that siding, or change it entirely? I'm not sure we've reached that. See, my original decision was based on just a more broad-brust fact that it was common to see the horizontal, the vertical on accessory structures, sheds and barns and the like. But in this case, you have an historic garage or shed that has the horizontal orientation. So what finding are you making to change that orientation completely? You're really making a big change of what it, to what it was originally. Well, and that's part of my question is, I don't see that there was evidence presented to that effect in the original hearing that that came to be. And so that's, you know, that's part of it. There is one in the standards, they talk about economic consideration as one of the areas that we can have a...
We can make concessions.
Mm-hmm. But I don't know that that's actually, you know, other than anecdotal evidence, I don't know that that's, at least on the site, I don't know that's actually been presented in a way that is meaningful to make a decision. And Mayor, if I may, you know, staff just had, just becoming reeducated and becoming much more familiar with the Secretary of Interior standards, I really didn't see the ability to make that leap, to make that dramatic change in the siding. Unless, of course, the applicant was able to come back with historic photos and showed that it was some later period in time that it had vertical orientation wood siding on it, and they wanted to go back and restore it back to more in keeping with the period of when the structure was built. I mean, I can see in that sort of stance where you'd clearly make that change. But I'm not sure there was any, anything here to justify making that change.
You know, another thing that the standards and guidelines discuss, which hasn't really come up is tonight, is that it's really not ideal to imitate historical materials or features with new construction. So there's been some talk about how much vinyl or these other materials look like the original materials. But also, you know, when it comes to the orientation of the siding, it would make sense in the neighborhood if there's newer garages that were built in the eighties or the nineties that have board and batten siding, because they wouldn't want to imitate the historic siding. And maybe that's why there's, it appears that there's a lot of board and batten, is that there are newer structures. But, you know, not wanting to change, not wanting to change and imitate past structures with the materials, it's just something that hasn't really come up yet. I don't know if I, I don't think I articulated that very well, but...
And I think, you know, one thing for all of us to consider here, because it's not been said out loud, but I'll say it out loud, is most, the reason why it's so easy to find pictures of vinyl windows and steel frames and others, because it just hasn't been enforced. And people have done this on their own without even coming. So I give people credit for actually pulling permits, because I would say eighty, ninety percent of this is just people that went out on their own and did it. And, you know, it's a staffing issue, it's being able to actually keep on top of it. But I think one of the, one of our speakers said, you know, we've, we can see a slow degradation of the standards, because some of these things have just happened on their own. And so that shouldn't be the reasoning for why we've, I mean, at some point, you have to kind of put a line in the sand, right? And so I think a lot of the ones that we've seen are just basically folks have done it on their own. And, you know, that's, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, Mayor, if staff can make a quick comment. Councilmember Saragosa mentions, you know, the windows, and that's true. We do see a lot of the vinyl windows. But I think, I think it's important to understand, you know, at least from staff's perspective, it goes beyond just the window itself, meaning the glass that's framed by the vinyl, or framed by fiberglass, or some other kind of material. The fact of the matter is, you change, typically what changes is the overall look of that window, the whole elevation changes, because you're not going to have the window sill, you're not going to have the framing that originally has. That all gets replaced with, with just a trim. And so you're really losing a lot more than just the original glass and the frame that encased the window, if that makes sense.
It does. I mean, you can spot it a mile away when you see a vinyl window versus a wood window and all the casings around it.
Yep. And while there's some subjectivity to this in terms of making decisions based on some other facts, that, you know, one of the things that I think people buy houses in historical districts because they want that, there's some expectation that we're going to follow the rules when it comes to having their neighbors do what they're going to do on their property. Now, I'm a big property rights person. And I believe that you should have the ability to do on your property what you want. But the reality is, is that, you know, we make rules in the city, and our community, and these are community rules. They're not just, people get to weigh in, and people have conversations, and we, and we do this. And I think that one of the things our community did way back is say, we want to have these historical districts, and we want to have this preservation. And people buy houses in there to, for that, for that purpose. And their property value is somewhat dependent on, you know, us upholding our obligation to maintain these, these historical districts. And so I think that's part of it, too. Now, we can make decisions to that effect, that we want to degrade that by allowing certain things like vinyl windows and just making it rote instead of having it come to the planning commission just for them to say it. But I tell you, that's one of the things that caused me heartburns in this whole thing, is when they say, well, you can just, you can use wood, vinyl, or composite, you know, it's like, do whatever you want. I go back to that. And that's not in keeping with the standards.
But they also, I mean, that, they can use what they want, but they have to present it to the planning commission before they use it, right?
To staff, I believe.
Or staff?
Staff.
So they have that option.
So when they give that statement to you as staff, when they say you can, you can select wood, vinyl, or metal, how do you, how do you interpret that from a, from over-the-counter point at that? I don't believe staff has had that experience before. So it would be new. And I would expect to see, I mean, typically, a window company has samples, and where they're, that are cut out, and they show the cross-sections, but physical samples. Then that's what I think we would like to see, not just a two-dimensional spec sheet. Thank you.
Process question, I guess. So if I were to make a motion that would grant the site plan review, but with, you know, having siding that, that is like to what is there currently, and, you know, changing out the, you know, adding back indoor and like-for-wood, single-hung, is there a material difference between that and just granting the, I mean, it might be some time, but granting the appeal? Because essentially, we're, would then be saying, you have to use the guidelines, these aren't the products that the applicant wants to use. So is there a specific difference between the two?
Mayor, if staff can just make one, one quick comment, because I can see where, maybe where you're going. Staff is not comfortable of, let's just say, being a substitute for the planning commission. And so we would like, staff would like to see some finality, both, you know, for the sake of the applicant and for staff, that basically, they're going to come in with something that's consistent with the direction being given by, by the council, and not something where staff then has to utilize some level of discretion, that maybe it shouldn't have.
Yeah, no, because I think what I was saying was, if we approved, essentially, the staff language from the planning commission pre-recommended language, not the, not the approved language, is there a specific difference between that and granting the denial? Because essentially, we're saying you need to go back and use the...
Well, if you grant the appeal, they have to go back through the site plan review process again.
And there are other things that were approved, like installing the exterior door on the back, which seems like a safety, illegitimate safety thing, which the guidelines does allow for updating. So, I mean, I would feel comfortable taking a stab at rewording the language.
So basically, we're saying if we do number four with the modifications, or, you know, the original staff recommendations, then they can move forward with everything?
Right.
Okay. I'm okay with that.
So I'll, I'll take a stab at approving SPR 2105 with modifications. And I'll just read through the approval with the, my suggested modified language. Approval of the request to, one, existing shed, install of new board and batten siding over old siding, replace existing door, window, and exterior light. That's unchanged, because that is not visible from the road, so that doesn't fall under this purview.
This shit doesn't matter either.
This shit. Two, existing two-car garage, instead of install new board and batten siding over existing siding, I recommend refurbish existing lap siding.
And replace where necessary.
And replace where necessary. Or, yeah. Install exterior door on the back, east elevation, side in place of existing window, and repurpose install window on the west side facing house. And install exterior lighting over automatic garage door. And three, existing house, replace original front door with similar styled door, instead of material... I don't know, does that one...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Similar-style door. And replace seven original single-hung windows with similar style...
And then we go with like-for-like?
With like-for-like windows, subject to staff's approval, to the existing single-story, single-family residence located. And then the rest is unchanged. Is everyone on board with those changes?
Yep. I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a first and a second roll call.
Pierre, does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember, no?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everybody. And again, I, my heart goes out to the applicant. I know that this is a tough process, but we do just have rules we have to follow in the city, so. We're going to take a quick five-minute break before we start on the next appeal. We are moving on to 11.2. This is to consider an appeal filed by Kirk Smith of the decision of the planning commission approving site plan review, SPR 2201, allowing for exterior modifications to a single-family residence located at 3084 Sacramento Street, within the Sacramento Street Chamberlain Historic Residential District. I'm not going to read through the entire procedure again. I'll just do a quick reminder. We're going to do 10 minutes, well, actually, maybe I will refresh my memory. So first, I'm going to ask if there's any expartee... So first, I'm going to ask if there's any ex parte communication and conflict of interest. We will invite Staff to give their staff report, and then the appellant will have 10 minutes to make his case, and the applicant will have 10 minutes to make their case. We'll open it up to public comment. The public will have three minutes, each speaker will have three minutes, to make their comment. And then we will allow the appellant and the applicant each a three-minute rebuttal. We will then close the public hearing and allow the Council to ask questions of Staff and deliberate on the decision. So with that, we will now open public hearing on...
Just one second.
What's that?
I'd like to acknowledge some ex parte communication.
Oh, I haven't gotten it.
Oh, you haven't got it?
But go ahead.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought that was for that part, so.
I did, too.
Do you want to open it first? Go ahead and open it first.
Yeah, so I'm going to open the public hearing on Agenda Item 11.2 and ask any member of the Council to announce if they've had ex parte communication. Dennis, would you?
I had the occasion to have Alan and Teresa show up at my work and wanted to chat with me for a few minutes, and I acknowledged that we had this meeting coming up, and there was, they wanted to have a conversation with me. I said I'd be happy to listen to them, however, I wasn't going to provide much of an opinion on my side. And so we did, I did listen, and we talked about it for just about five or 10 minutes, and that was it. So, thank you.
Okay. And then my ex parte communication from the last appeal would carry over. I had a brief, informal chat with Kirk Smith on March 31st about a number of different topics that happened locally, and he mentioned that he was making this appeal. It was brief and general. Does anybody have anything else to report, or a conflict of financial interest? Okay. So with that, I'd like to invite Staff to give their presentation. Mr. Rebus.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council. The Council is being asked to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a site plan review application from March 15th, 2022, which would permit the property owners, the applicant being Alan and Teresa Heine, to modify the exterior of a single-family residence located at 3084 Sacramento Street, which is located within the Sacramento Street-Chamberlain Street Historic Residential District in accordance with City Code Section 10-4-10. The appellant, Mr. Kirk Smith, filed a timely notice of appeal on March 25th of 2022. Please note that the application and facts with this historic site plan review is very similar to the case that just preceded it. The staff report attempts to characterize in daylight issues involved, and in general, the Council has four options. One, the Council can deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the Planning Commission approving site plan review 2201, adopting the findings of the Planning Commission and the conditions of approval. Or two, it could grant the appeal filed by Kirk Smith, overturning the approval taken by the Planning Commission, and deny site plan review 2201. Three, it could grant the appeal filed by Kirk Smith in part and approve site plan review 2201, subject to the conditions of approval as recommended by Staff. Or four, you could approve site plan review 2201 with modifications, and the Council could certainly adjust findings as appropriate. So it was the direction of the Planning Commission to allow the property owner the option of using alternative materials for the replacement of windows and siding, such as composite or vinyl, as opposed to only wood, as long as the architectural features are consistent with the age of the residence, subject to Staff's approval. So another concern that Staff had was with the addition of the language to the condition that required Staff's application of the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines, given the applicant then could provide any kind of material, as long as it's architecturally consistent. This places Staff in sort of an awkward position of making an interpretation, application of the Secretary of Interior Standards and Guidelines that may differ from that of the Planning Commission, and not allowing for the modifications that may have otherwise been approved by the Commission, if that, hopefully, that makes sense. So if you look at your staff report, again, Staff provided you with condition number one shown with the modifications made by underline and strikeout. And so with that, that concludes Staff's report. I'll be happy to answer questions you have at this time.
Any questions for Pierre? So just to kind of summarize for anyone that's watching at home, doesn't have this in front of them, the work that's being done is to lay over or replace existing horizontal wood lap siding above grade of Sacramento Street with uniform horizontal lap siding. Wood was struck out of that, subject to approval by Staff, and retaining repairing the existing wood siding on the east elevation Sacramento Street frontage, if possible. And then this section was struck out by the Planning Commission. And lay over or replace existing board and batten below grade garage basement with the same. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that is correct. The Planning Commission clearly wanted to retain the orientation of the wood siding above, I guess, the wood sill or above, you know, Sacramento grade. Everything below would be the basement or garage.
Okay.
So you can clearly see that elevation of the house from chapel.
Okay.
Which I think is shown in the staff report that went to the Planning Commission.
All right. Second, replace six original single-hung windows, single-hung wood windows with new vinyl, wood, or composite white single-hung windows, subject to approval by Staff to the extent that conditions one and two are consistent with the Staff's application of the Secretary of Interior Standards for rehabilitation and guidelines for rehabilitating historic buildings. Could you clarify that finding, that condition of approval?
There were a couple of issues. One, the windows have already been replaced, and so there was no opportunity to even examine the state of the windows that were removed, what condition they were in. And so Staff went ahead and was basically sort of acquiescing to going ahead with allowing for those windows. And then the Planning Commission expanded that to include wood or composite. I'm not really sure why, because the vinyl windows are already in.
Okay.
So you're not going to pull them out and put in a composite, unless, of course, you were going to require a stricter interpretation of the Secretary of Interior Guidelines, and then the vinyl windows have to come out, and then you've got to replace them with wood windows that are better matching the historic period of the house, which was built, I believe, in 1880.
Okay. And then it says, subject to approval by Staff, to the extent that conditions one and two are consistent with Staff's application of this SOI.
That's why in my staff report, I said Staff did have some concern with that language, because it almost seems like it's, there's no definitive approval by the Planning Commission.
Right, okay.
It's basically deferring it all back to Staff again, which then puts us kind of in an awkward position if Staff is being told to be, to really apply the Secretary of Interior Standards.
Yeah.
We're probably going to differ with what the original intent was of the Planning Commission, and then the applicant will have the ability to appeal that again.
Okay. Because I read that, and I was confused, so I could see that being problematic. Three, replace rain gutters. And four, paint entire home cottage white with door and gutters painted Dynasty Marquee Black to the existing single-family residence located at 3084 Sacramento Street, located within the Sacramento Street-Chamberlain Historic District. So it's changing siding on the lower elevation, replacing the horizontal lap siding above grade Sacramento Street, and then retroactively approving vinyl windows that were already put in?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions at this time? Okay, I'd like to invite the appellant, Mr. Smith, to make his case. And Dennis, do you want to start the clock?
You bet.
And we'll just, he'll wave it, you know, what, 30 seconds? Is that good? Okay. This is a bad night for our timer to go out, so I apologize for that.
We're always just explaining that as far as the ex parte communication...
I'm sorry.
Our discussion went for a long time and covered everything but this case. And earlier, the conversations with Councilmember Borelli, for example, had nothing to do with this case. It was chatting about the sands and that condition, which I think you should give an award to the guy who repaired it and put it into shape, who did a fabulous job. Okay, now for my, whatever minutes it is. I'll be fairly brief, because I think that the applicant helps to outline the issues. Why? Because he's provided you this PowerPoint presentation. It basically points out the whole bunch of different properties all over the place and says they're not consistent. They don't have, you know, they're like vinyl windows, for example, things like that. Well, the problem with that is, just to start with some basics, is all of us have gone to intersections and seen people go through a stop sign without stopping. But does that mean we ought to get rid of the rules because, hey, it gets violated all the time? More importantly, when you look at these photographs, they're comparing them to properties that have horizontal lap siding in most cases. And then in one in particular, I think it's very impressive, because it's a property over on Coloma Road, and this is property number 2935 Coloma Road. It's the brick structure with the American flag outside. It's described as vinyl. Now, I don't know how many of you have passed by that property. Presumably, all of you have all the time. I never knew what was vinyl. Why? Because that exactly looks like an original structure. Because in the old days, 75, 100 years ago, you didn't go to motherlode glass. You got glass in sections that were maybe one foot, two foot square, and if something broke, especially during the Depression, you'd go down and get it yourself and replace it. That's the way windows were. So one of the big problems that we have with the vinyl windows put in by this applicant is they're not at all like what was originally there. How would I know? I passed down that street for most of my life. The Heines, a different spelling, who lived there before, Marie Heins worked in our grocery store. The other, her husband, worked for the city. I knew the well. They destroyed the siding, the lap siding, and were ready to do the same for the front. And the explanation was, well, it would be too expensive, and they wanted to put the board and batting business with the plywood. Sorry, they need to take out the vinyl windows and put back windows that look like what they were before. This is, the two cases are dissimilar, because it's not somebody who's living there. It's a couple of speculators, people who come from out of town, several properties, someone who's in the record 40 years, I think it was, as a contractor, who knew the rules and chose not to follow the rules. And then we have a real estate agent who, again, knew the rules but didn't follow the rules. So you tear off the siding, and now we want to say, oh, it's so economically difficult for you, go ahead and tear off the rest, or something like that. No, you need to replace those windows with windows that look like what they were before. And you can go down to the History Museum and find photographs of property in that area to see what structures look like. But comparing them to these other properties are irrelevant unless you can show that the ones with vinyl windows and different kinds of siding were done after the guidelines were in place. If they were done long ago, it doesn't count. So that's why it's a much different case. And then you've got another flavor of the intent of this particular applicant, unlike the other one, when you're told that it's property rights over, again, not protecting what were described as relics. So I think the staff outlines the issues for you. It's just that my resolution that I recommend is you do exactly what the guidelines are for. You don't want to send a message to people in this town that Kirk Smith and everybody else can just ignore getting a permit, which I've done in the past for what I do. But go ahead and ignore it, because you've got a good chance they're not going to make you pay, and if you get caught, they'll make you pay, and then they'll go ahead and let you get away with all the junk you've already done to tear up the property. So no, follow the guidelines, which means going back and replacing the siding with lap shop siding, which is available. I checked it at Diamond Lumber. They can get it in two days, that's seven inches long, and in two days, and they come in 16-inch wide sections, 16 feet long. So anyway, I have strong concerns about the reference to relics, because that's our heritage in this community, and that's why you pass the guidelines, and that's why they should be enforced fully. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the appellant? No? Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to come up and make their case.
Well, good evening, Mayor Taylor, councilmembers, city council, development staff, police, fire, community service, all of you folks. Hope I got everyone. My name is Alan Heine. My wife Teresa and I are here, and we appreciate you hearing our reply to Mr. Smith's appeal. We own two homes on the property, 3082 and 3084 Sacramento Street. Both properties have remained as we purchased them up until the point in time when we began this repair. And it was a repair, and here's what we found out. Two of the windows have become completely inoperable, and the tenant had decided to bring five reptiles into the house with heating elements. Now, I actually had a person's house burned down from one of those things. So we had to make a repair, because you do have to have ingress and egress, and it had to happen immediately. In fact, under 10.410, you don't even need a permit for an emergency repair, and this definitely qualifies for that. We have firemen right here that would tell you that. So that's very important to note. Secondly, we are, we are, have these two homes, and one of them, 3082, actually has aluminum siding and had aluminum and vinyl windows when we purchased it. The house that we're talking about, 3084 Sacramento Street, has five different sidings on it. The ones that are on there on that south side were misaligned. There was an old door that was cut out of the side of that building at one point, and they just threw siding in there and put trim around it. That was just an eyesore. That south-facing face was not consistent. And so we thought, this is a great time. Both my hips have been replaced, I'm all ready, I can work, I'm going to go out and get this done. So we took out the windows. The very next day, we met with Diane Palmer, she was out there. She said, come to the permit center, we need to get a permit now. And this is when this all began. Mr. Smith referred to us as Sacramentans, obviously in an attempt to suggest we're outsiders of the community. My wife was born and raised here. She raised her children here. She went to school here, graduated here, worked here. And we lived in El Dorado County when we bought these properties. I had just finished a home for her, and we moved into it. Mr. Smith's description of 3084 being the most widely viewed home is an exaggeration. And the condition of these homes, they are basically off of Sacramento Street, and I'm going to go to Slide 2 here. Okay. Oop. There we are. Okay. This begins, basically, when you're coming up the street, you'll see, these are BP Zone properties, and the arrow points to where our property is, right after this Setts Miller Brokerage House. And so these are on BP Zone properties. The first home, like I say, is just an aluminum-sided home... The first home, like I say, is just an aluminum-sided home with aluminum and vinyl windows. The way we bought it, we still retain the right for BP zoning. I don't know, you know, it makes it sound like these are homes. They were used previously for walk-in store uses of some kind because the kitchen sink had been removed out of 308-2, and they just put a countertop there. And then the vignette of 308-4 had some sort of storefront because inside of it was wardrobe mirror and a closet rod. Some people were doing, I don't know, selling dresses or something in there. So they had these as storefronts. We converted them back to housing on the interiors so we could rent them out. Go to the next one. Sacramento, I gotta go back. Let's see, I'm sorry. Sacramento Street was widened some time ago and is only eight feet off the porch of both of our homes. Our two current housing units are along a fully established BP and commercial zoned area. Commercial-looking buildings surround us northwest, north, east, and southeast directions. The total time of seeing these when you're driving by them is about two seconds, and that means you have to turn your head to see them. Okay? The south elevation of 308-4 was the most important side needing repaired, as I explained earlier, and that's because the general community sees that, and that's why we focused on that as far as getting the siding up. There is a historic listed home, I believe, only one in that district that we could find that's actually listed. But we drove off in, what's that? Five minutes, okay. So we drove off that entire district, and we found only two homes that did not have vinyl windows and composite siding. That entire district. Let me get to slide three. There we go. There are historic listed homes, Victorian, at 2923 Coloma Road. Please note, on this picture up there, you will see one inch minus siding, which was the original siding. And at below that, it had to be replaced at one point. This is a listed historic home, so I know the permits were done. They had to have been. There's vinyl windows, and the replacement of the windows below is with just typical ship lap. Now, a trained eye like mine, I can see that just by walking by it, but maybe most people would not. But that was done. Right down the road from it, 2916 Coloma Road, restored property with vinyl windows? This is a listed historic home. Slide four. Here's a bungalow style at 2920 Coloma Road, listed home, a listed historic home with aluminum and vinyl windows. 2935 Coloma Road, listed on Placerville's Historic Homes. These are listed homes, vinyl windows. And the lit, there were so many, we could keep going. I could have had 20 of these here. Now, here's unlisted homes that have been renovated. On the next, oh, here we are. I think we're good. Okay. 2946 Coloma Road, vinyl windows. 2950 Coloma Road, vinyl windows. Now we go back to the district that we're in, and there's a huge difference in those homes and what we have in our district. This is 799 Chamberlain, vinyl siding and vinyl windows. 788 Chamberlain, next to it, composite siding, vinyl windows. And note, there's a T-111 shed right out in front of the property that's just sitting out there in full gaze of the roadway. Now, these are all approved permitted stuff that's been done through the city. You can't say that these things just all happened overnight and people didn't, weren't allowed and approved. They had to have been. And we've asked for the information from Pierre. I know he's busy and he can't get to it, but we've looked up some of these things, and we know the permits have happened. 795 Chamberlain, here's the next one. 795 Chamberlain, vinyl siding, vinyl windows. 3100 Sacramento Street, vinyl windows. Okay, and then right at the top, at the end of the historic district, here's a row of houses off of Chamberlain, vinyl windows and T-111 siding. None of these are to so historic quality that they're talking about replica standards that Mr. Smith is asking us to adhere to. And I would have to ask you, if the city is willing to allow other people to do this but not us, that's clearly discrimination. Why are we being singled out as applicants when all other people have been able to do this? And I'll tell you why. Because people have used a reasonable discretionary ability to allow people to move ahead so they can afford to do repairs. You're trying to hold people to a standard that's not even listed in the SOI. I'm going to read that to you. The Secretary of the Interior Standards for Treatment of Historic Properties are regulatory only for projects receiving Historic Preservation Fund grant assistance and other federally-assisted projects. Otherwise, these guidelines are intended to provide general guidance for work on any historic home. That's what the whole idea of a conditional idea of looking at these things and being practical, economic standards. If you force people into doing replica, do they become historic homes at the end of it all? If we were to do everything Kirk Callan Smith asked us to do, do we suddenly now have a listed historic home? Chances are, no, because it didn't go through the proper protocol. The city is making some errors here when they start trying to force people into doing something that really, even by their own standards, they wouldn't require.
All right. Thank you.
Thirty seconds. Oh, that's the 30 seconds.
Okay. Thank you. At this, at this time, we will open it up to public comment.
I commend you as to what I saw you do, and it'll be interesting since this is very different. But I felt, and I liked it, but I'm not going to say ghost, I felt you had the spirit of ordinances passed, and you referenced community rules, which I think was really a good reference. I was grateful that Sue Taylor brought up old growth. I have done extensive work, and old windows have their own character. Window panes, I didn't know this, it's not static. They change very slowly over time. And then I think you got into the spirit of Placerville present. And people talk about money pits, but every house that I have lovingly restored, I consider to be a labor pit. And you just, you work on it, and the, and when you see a real two-by-four, rough cut, I can still remember, my goodness, what happened to, you know, two-by-fours because they sure don't look like those old ones? And I can relate to the single pane issues that were brought up, and I remember we would get creative because, hey, people lived in these houses for a long time. And I worked in houses that had gas lighting in them still, and to keep ourselves warm, we would make quilts and hang the quilts up until we could afford to weatherproof the windows and things like that. And, you know, the spirit of Placerville present, I think, was shown in the Caldor Fire, in the Rise and Shine, all of those things, and I urge you to consider your guidelines. Where I lived, we didn't have historic districts. We had a community that pulled together, and at some point, you have to stop these things, and what brought us together was literally losing our landmark Victorian, going down the street at 3:00 AM, I can still remember, and bought out and taken to a rich suburb to be a bread and breakfast. And then that's when we organized, and we had an advantage, which, as I watch all of these, it's this creep you talked about. And our advantage was, this was a really poor neighborhood, and nobody had replaced any windows or any siding until we all got together. And that's what I urge you, like the spirit of Placerville future. There's so much that can be done with the labor of our community. Thank you.
Ruth Michelson. This is really late for me. I keep farmer's hours, and I'm usually asleep by now, but I'll give it my best. You know, first, I'd like to, like to clarify something, that this isn't Kirk Smith against the applicant. It isn't appellate against the applicant. I think we need to clarify that. This is Kirk Smith questioning the Planning Commission's decision. And it bothers me, I have to say, that this has been personalized, and then I'll move on to more relevant issues, but the last slide in the packet shows Kirk Smith's driveway of where he lives. How, how is that relevant to this issue? He's, he's not. Where he lives and what he does isn't, isn't an issue tonight, so I'm not clear why that was included in your slide presentation.
I have the answer.
Okay, when is your chance? Well, we'll hear. That'd be great. So I did attend this Planning Commission meeting and, on March 15th, and I did hear this applicant state that he has been a contractor for 40 years, and I did hear him state that the reason he didn't go for a permit for the windows, it wasn't what he said this evening, which does make sense, what he said about the emergency and egress and ingress of, you know, bedroom areas. But he said that Sacramento County, when he had approached them about replacing a few windows, they said, oh, yeah, don't bother, that's fine. Well, this isn't Sacramento County. And so it starts off on the wrong foot, that work's being done without a permit, and then also in that meeting, there was a question of how many of these windows had already been replaced, and there was some, lack of continuity in the responses, and then the applicant said, well, it wasn't really he doing the work, it was his nephew or something. Well, count, go by the facility, go by the house and count how many have been replaced. And so those were replaced without permit. I don't think that's the reason for them to be maintained because they were done without permit. I think we have to, again, just go back to the basics, again, not rocket science, and look at what the requirements are. And I am sorry, truly, that so much sloppiness has occurred, and I have no idea why. I don't know what occurred with all the examples that you've pointed out, and that's unfortunate because what it points out is that the historic district has been very denigrated. And do you put a finger in the dam and say, let's stop this denigration? And I do feel it's unfortunate for the people whom the tide will turn, and it does feel very unfair to them. But I think it is time to really respect those requirements. Thank you.
Goodness, I thought we were going to go in order again. Kathy Lishman and I owned a house that was built in 1880 when I first went to, moved to Placerville, that is now owned by someone else in this room. The special character of America's small towns and countrysides have been disappearing rapidly, faster than ever. Placerville has a strong sense of community, of character, and it, and of history, and it needs to be retained. A lot has been discussed tonight that doesn't really have anything to do with the application before us, so I would like to suggest that every year, the city send out a letter to every homeowner that lives, that owns a home in the historic district, that lays out the guidelines. And I would be happy to come and stuff those letters and get them to the post office because I think it's important to educate the, the public also. Like I had mentioned earlier, and I watched that meeting, it was as if there is one Planning Commissioner who represents the applicant often. And his big point this time was too expensive, too expensive. And he even asked the applicant if he, if it was too expensive, and he said yes. And I really felt like he's almost putting words into people's mouths. The part about subject to approval by staff, this particular Planning Commissioner actually told the applicant what they needed when they went to talk to staff to get their approval. So I think the whole thing was a sham, and I think Placerville needs to do more to protect its historic districts. Down the road, they may not be here, historic houses might be gone, and we've got to look to the future and to deal with the present also. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Once again, I think I forgot to say my name last time. Marion Washburn, Placerville resident. A couple of miscellaneous thoughts. I think as I watch the slides and listen to the, the commentary, it, it strikes me that justification for going forward with the applicant's request is really based on, sure, it's a violation, but who cares because everybody else has violated it? And I think Kirk Smith's analogy about the stop sign really makes sense to me. My emotional response is, what a shame that there are all these violations, if that is the case. I, I do kind of question when those improvements, quote unquote, were installed, whether that was, was in, in fact, after the historical preservation ordinance was passed. I think the main thought that I find salient is that when that historic preservation ordinance was passed, that was, it was written, number one, by group of residents to preserve and protect historic residences. And then it was passed by the Planning Commission and the City Council at the time, which was a reflection, they felt, as a, of a community standard. And as I listen to City Council campaigns over time, and I read things in the newspaper and social media, it seems like over and over and over again that people hold the historic legacy in, in great value, and I cannot think of anything that would violate it more or the heart of it more than saying, sure, vinyl siding is fine on, on historic structure within the historic district. And I might add, I don't see how the business professional zoning makes any difference whatsoever. If, if your property is in the, your property is in the preservation district, it is. What you use it for is an entirely different matter, so it seems like that, that's completely irrelevant. You, you don't get a pass because now I'm going to use it for a business. So I, I would encourage you, once again, to uphold the standard that has been passed, and I believe it's the community's desire to maintain that standard.
Amen to Marion. Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. I noticed that there was no pictures of historic homes that are kept historical. The Judge Thompson House on Cedar Veen is not in the slides. Neither is the one that is now Dennis' office. All of the exteriors of both of those appear to be in conformance with our historic guidelines. So you can pick and choose if you want, but really, if we have a standard, it needs to be maintained. And just because some other people jumped off the bridge into the canyon, does that mean you want to go jump off the bridge into the canyon too? I don't think so. I think there is, there is no excuse for the people who did things outside of the standards, and there's no excuse for the Planning Commission to uphold doing things outside the And there's no excuse for the Planning Commission to uphold doing things outside the standards. I think if we have standards and guidelines, that's what we approved, that's what we agreed to live by, that's what we should live by. It's our community, these are our standards, these are our guidelines. And I don't care if it's a rental house or the house you live in. If it's in the historic district and it's subject to these standards, then they need to be maintained.
Thank you, Sue.
I think it's pretty much been said that, I mean, when you buy into a place that's got a historic district overlay, you're kind of agreeing to that standard. And it's just, you know, people talk about property rights, but if you look at, when you buy a piece of property, you would hope that you look at the zoning and all the rules that apply to your property because I don't know any property that you can say, "I get free rein on this piece of property." There's always rules and regulations, and that's why you've got to be really careful when you buy something, that you make sure you know what all those are. I think there's a lot of misinformation about the cost of restoration. I think, you know, someone mentioned that wood windows are really expensive, so why would you take a wood window out of a house and put in a cheap vinyl window? When you could possibly repair that? I repaired a lot of wood. I'm not an expertise, but I've repaired some wood windows myself. And it's, I think, more economical than buying. And it's just really sad. This kind of puts that out, and others have said it, how many people have put in vinyl windows? And it's because of the, you know, they say they're more energy efficient, which isn't always true compared to the original old windows. And they usually don't last as long as those windows that used to be there, that you'll have to replace again. And they just, they change the look of, they just, they totally change the integrity of a historic structure. And I see them when I go by, it just kind of makes me nauseous. And I hope this is a great, like you said, if you could have a handout to people when they buy these houses and give them some of the rules and requirements, and maybe, again, make it not so hard to understand how you can repair these and still make them look original. And I feel like there's a lot of moving parts with this one. You know, you mentioned there's, I can't remember if it's metal or vinyl siding over the top already, but is that over existing wood siding? Or is that in lieu of? A lot of times, people put it over the old wood siding, and you could pop it off and find that old, and a lot of times that siding is redwood, old growth redwood. That is, so I would just hope that you, you know, there's an attitude of restoration. And I don't, I think it's sad to say, I was really, when you call these relics, I think their kind of attitude towards this iconic place, I think, needs to be looked at. And if people are taking out these, and you're allowing them to take historic doors and windows out, that maybe suggests, take them over, there's a place that takes those salvaged doors and windows. Because some of us are trying to find those to replace other buildings that want those put back in.
Thank you, Sue.
So thanks.
All right. I see no other people from the public wishing to make a comment. I did realize that I did not provide counsel with the opportunity to ask questions to the applicant after your 10 minutes. So I would like to invite you up. I know I'm going out of order a little bit, but.
Alan Hyena.
Any questions? I've got a couple, so, okay. Did I hear you correctly that there was a fire in the house and that's why it was an emergency to?
No. Windows for ingress and egress have to be a specific size and capability for a person to get out of the home in a bedroom during a fire. They have to be able to get out of it. If it's complete, they had a new German Shepherd dog who'd been scratching at the window, they were inoperable. I don't know if they, the rokes or whatever, but the inside of them were inoperable. You could not get out of them. And so those had to be replaced then. And yes, that is a comment that I did make at the other hearing where she said Sacramento County, because she said, "Did you get a permit for those windows?" I said, "They don't even ask."
Sir, this isn't the rebuttal part, so I just want to keep it to counsel comments. So just so I'm understanding, you recently bought the property and there were tenants already in it, and you realized that?
No, we bought it years ago. Years ago, yeah. And we put tenants into the property. And one of the tenants in the property is really problematic. She had, I don't want to say this in public, but she had a son that was special needs, and we felt guilty of having evicted her. So now the son is older, and it's about time. She needs to basically leave. She's broken the lease agreement three times. We've replaced flooring three times in that house.
So it became an emergency, I mean, you've owned the house for a long time, but it became an emergency that warranted not getting a permit for the work because you were having problems with the tenant and suddenly realized that it was a dangerous situation?
Well, you can, under 10.4, and it's in your own code, 10.4.10, you don't even need to get a re-permit for something, an emergency like that. And that was the very next day, literally, I went out that evening, bought windows, and I was going to replace those two in the bedrooms up front. There's actually three windows on that wall and two in the front that we were going to replace altogether.
Okay. And how much of the work that's in this has already been done? Have you already done the siding?
We've put the board, the plywood sheeting over the old misaligned siding is what we've done. And there were two different sightings, like literally misaligned, one of them a different style, and a hallway cut out and a door for it, an old kitchen door that we assumed was there. We don't, there wasn't even stairs off of it. It's like five feet off the ground.
Was that an emergency too, the siding?
No, it was not.
Or did you think you needed a permit for that?
I went in to get the permit the very next day. When she came out, saw us replacing the windows.
But on the siding, that wasn't an emergency, correct?
No, there was going to be the board and bat.
You just decided to do it yourself?
Yeah.
Without getting a permit?
No, we went in to get a permit. When we were caught with the windows, we went in to get the permit. And we submitted four drawings to Mr. Pierre Rivas here, and he actually thought that we would get approved with the board and bat and design. He told us, my wife and I, that he thinks he could get this approved with no problem. Word, word for word. So that's what we said. We brought it in. And now we're here.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay, thank you.
I still am going to get the rebuttal though, to a couple of the comments.
You are, yep.
All right, thank you.
But Kirk, at this point, I'd like to invite you up for your rebuttal. Three minutes.
Does it rebuttal, if I'm the appellate, wouldn't I go at the end?
Am I going out of order, Mona?
Is that the way it usually is, counsel?
No.
How do we do it here?
You're up.
Pardon?
You're up.
Okay, good. Well, again, the two situations are dramatically different. Because the first one, in case of Mr. Scott, he described how he, in good faith, understood the word "guidelines." But that's not the case here. There's significant discrepancies. At the hearing, he described how his experience was in Sacramento and elsewhere, and that he knew about the need for it. But, hey, in here, if you get two windows, you've got to replace two windows, that's okay. And then the commissioners pointed out during the hearing, "Oh, but you did more than two. You actually replaced, I think, about five." So there was a discrepancy there. You don't have any of these doors, these windows that were described as stopping you from egress or egress. Why not? You throw them away? What, where's your evidence? And we don't see the photographs of the south side of the building. That is pure crap. It's plywood. And those windows that were put in, brand-new windows, don't look anything like what's depicted in those photographs. None of those photographs have been described, no matter if they're inconsistent with his perceptions of it, there's nothing that says those are inconsistent with the law. None of those persons are said to have done their work in conflict with the law, either getting a permit or getting a, or following the guidelines in that area. So that wasn't shown. These windows look nothing like the originals. And the modern double-pane, triple-pane windows, argon, gas, whatever it is, are available to allow for open access as well as the wooden ones that were there before. So that's what's very troublesome, is we have two dramatically different cases. So you're going to be sending a message that says, "Go ahead and ignore it." Because we'll just come in here and say, you know, "Those aren't historic, and they didn't follow the guidelines, et cetera." But we don't know that they didn't follow the guidelines. And even if they did, does that mean you should get away with it? Lastly, I want to assert an objection because when we were here the last time, I believe it was, the, you know, Cleve said, "There's no need to file an objection, no need to file an appeal in the case of this matter because Dennis Thomas would be filing an appeal on behalf of the council." And a number of times since then, I would be advised, as were other members of the public, "Don't bother filing an appeal." And then when I saw the appeal at the last minute, I saw why it was a good choice for me to file one, because it had nothing to do with a true appeal. So I really think that if someone talks to you about this case, you have to say, "No, I can't talk to you." Doesn't matter whether it's two minutes, five minutes, you can't talk to you. None of you have ever heard me talk to you about a case. And in the case of commissioners, I talked to one about one other matter, and she said, "I can't talk to you if it's about a contested matter." So I have to ask for recusal. That's the way the guidelines are, that I know. It's in your inadvertent, whatever, it doesn't matter. It's a need to recuse. These are different situations. You have to stick to the rules.
Kirk, three minutes is up. Thank you very much. All right. And now I'd like to invite the applicant up for a rebuttal.
Thank you once again. First of all, I would like to ask the city to honor this. I'd like a copy through the Freedom of Information Act of all the actual approvals that have been done with vinyl siding and composite siding, including the historical homes and non-listed homes in the area. Because I know we drove off so many homes that if I brought all of them in here, there would be like 20 to 30 pictures of homes. And these were, these are pictures with, homes with placards on the outside of their home. I know for a fact, they had to be approved. And that's one of the things missing here. These people are getting up saying, "Well, these people didn't follow the rules and they got away with it." No, the city approved them. The city approved other people getting vinyl windows and composite sightings. But they're going to make us, the last applicant and myself, fall on the sword so that you could come up with a change and actually start being more burdening to other people. You cannot discriminate against people. You can't give 20 approvals to other people, then turn around and treat an applicant like they're going to be now, you know, just kicked to the curb. It's not right. And I think people should look at that before they make this decision tonight. Because I'm pretty animated about this. And I think a lot of people will find out after tonight what's going on with the city. There's something afoot here. Is state money trying to come into this process? Everyone keeps talking about the SOI. Why are we so worried about being sure that we're following the SOI right now? They got a 19% increase in their budget last year. How did they do that? The SOI, actually, the Department of the Interior. So I think there's some really odd things going on with the city because practically, yeah, I was trying to put some windows in and got caught. I came into the city that morning, went through the process to try to do what we're supposed to do. And then we end up here. Why are we the only two applicants being treated like this? And I would, and I really, Pierre, I really do need to see that list. Because I want to see these approvals. I want to see how they were done. I want to see if any of them came across the council. That's all. Anyways, thank you. Sorry for being so animated. Mr. Smith makes a hobby of appealing people, and he's getting better at it, apparently. And anyway, I do appreciate your time, but I do think this is discrimination. I truly believe that.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and ask for staff to provide any additional background or address issues that were raised in the hearing. Are there any questions from counsel?
Mayor Thomas, I do. I have a couple of points, actually, that I would like to respond. There have been a number of legal issues that have been raised, and those are specifically the ones that I want to respond to. The first was comments that this is discriminatory in nature, and it's not. First of all, as has been reflected in the record tonight, this is one of the first, if not the first, appeal to the City Council on these historic issues in recent history. Secondly, the council can and has made a determination, at least with the past application, that the Planning Commission, in its judgment, has not properly applied the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines. And you are well within your authority to do that. That's not discrimination, so you can do that. Finally, there was a question from the same property owner about the application of the Secretary of Interior standards and guidelines on property owners who have not elected to have their properties listed on a historic register. And while that is true for properties that take advantage of what's called the Mills Act, and they get property tax credits for that, the city in this case has affirmatively opted into and incorporated by reference those restrictions and guidelines into its ordinance. And it has, within its police powers, the authority to do so. So but for having adopted that in the ordinance, that would have been a correct statement. But because the city affirmatively did adopt it in its municipal code, it is applicable to all properties within the historic district. So that's why the application is valid. Mr. Smith made a comment about Councilmember Thomas's ex-party communication. Despite not having mentioned this when the ex-party communication was disclosed and when the public hearing was opened, there have been no reportings of a financial economic interest on behalf of Councilmember Thomas in participating in this decision. There's no other legal conflicts of interest that would preclude him. And council members, elected and appointed officials, but specifically elected officials, are charged with the responsibility of listening to their constituents. And just because a constituent wants to speak with you, that doesn't automatically preclude you from participating in this. If you make your ex-party disclosures and can state on the record that you have no bias, no, you can act objectively in this instance. So Councilmember Thomas, if you believe that with the communications that occurred, that you can act objectively, there is no legal conflict of interest that would preclude your participation today.
All right. Thank you. Bringing it back to counsel, do we have questions for staff?
Mona, you read my mind. Those were my two questions I was going to ask, so I appreciate the, so just again, the SOI has a rule of law in the city of Placerville because it was thusly adopted.
Exactly.
Thank you.
So a couple of, Mr. Smith made the statement that we had never, the council had never been faced with this, but it's because this, an appeal was filed, right, that we got this?
That's correct.
That's the only reason that we're, it came to us. I mean, those 20 others that he's claiming got away with it. We didn't get an appeal. I mean, nobody brought it to our attention. I mean, it was not discussed. Is that right?
That's correct. So the Planning Commission had interpreted all of its decision consistently. However, those decisions had not yet been appealed to the council. So this is the council's first impression at this issue.
Right. I just wanted to make that clear, why we are getting it. Okay, thank you.
I'll just add one more thing. So Planning Commission decisions, despite whatever's been ruled in the past, aren't presidential for the City Council?
That's correct. The council is free to make its own determination, and that's why you have the alternatives before you. You can accept, reject, modify, continue the hearing, it's all within your prerogative. What's important is that once you do make a decision, or once the Planning Commission makes a decision, the bases for that decision are uniformly applied.
Understood. Thank you.
I think in this situation, it's, I think it's important to act as if none of the repairs are done, and that, uh, the applicant, you know, essentially has come in and is, is, was, and is applying as a new project rather than an existing project. Because I, I believe that's the way, way we should treat it. Just to set the foundation, for me, anyway.
I would argue that somebody that was caught putting in something without permits is actually, um, uh, you know, something that we do need to take into consideration.
What's that mean to you?
It means that you don't get to have a free ride because you've already put labor and time into something, and then you got caught, and so now it's too hard of an issue to handle. So, I, I do think it's germane to what we're going to, um, discuss here and, and apply the rules. Because unlike the first applicant that, um, kind of went through the whole process, uh, but had a, potentially a faulty planning commission ruling, in this case, we would never even see this if it hadn't been for enforcement action taking against this property. And in their own words, they said they were caught. So, I do think it's relevant.
So, and that's what I don't, I'm, I think I need a clarification. Well, the first two windows that he replaced were, was considered an emergency. So, is that when, when he was caught? Um, that's what I'm not, I think I'm understanding.
I have a very low threshold to believe that being, that emergency egress was the issue. It just happened to be that, that's when they were caught. So, yeah, all windows being replaced doesn't seem to quite hold the, uh, argument there.
So, the applicant, um, Greg Rivas, the applicant, uh, quoted a statute that says that he has the right to replace the windows on an emergency basis. Does that also mean it, he's excluded from the, um, the standards for a historical district at the same time?
No, and staff does not agree with that interpretation made by the applicant. In staff's opinion, the need to fix that window did not constitute an emergency, because it was not, it was not what I would call an imminent health and safety hazard or imminent threat to the building. Um, under the building code, an applicant or a property owner is allowed to affect repairs in an emergency situation. Probably the clearest example would be a broken water line, a broken sewer line, um, a roof, where you have a tree fall on a roof in your middle of winter. Then those property owners can affect repairs immediately, but they're required to apply for a building permit within twenty-four hours. In this case, none of those circumstances, at least in staff's opinion, exists. Was not an emergency.
Thank you.
So, this one's a little complicated because, well, it's complicated for a lot of reasons, including the fact that some of the work is already done. But aside from that, the talk of the siding not matching and already being kind of a mess, how would, I mean, what would be the correct course of action in a case like that where the, you know, historic integrity of the building's already been so severely compromised?
Well, looking at the Secretary of Interior guidelines, then, uh, the applicant would have come in with an elevation showing, uh, how they were going to first, you know, repair or make replacement, or somehow return it to a more, maybe a more uniform siding that's in keeping with the period of the 1880 house?
Okay.
Rather than a, because it, the applicant was proposing a, it was a wholesale change. The applicant originally came in with a request to change, and we're talking about, um, the south elevation above the Sacramento grade, so above the, the, above the basement elevation, uh, to change it from, uh, horizontal to vertical board and batten, which would have been a, you know, basically a very substantial change to even what was there existing. But it wouldn't match anything that would have been historic with the 1880 house.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then just, so we're looking at, there's the north elevation, there's the south elevation. Are all of, which sides are the ones that are viewable by the street?
Uh, you definitely have, uh, the west elevation is clearly visible from chapel. Then you have the south elevation, it's clearly visible from Chamberlain. And then you have the front of the house, which is the east elevation, that's clearly visible from Sacramento. You could say that maybe there is limited visibility for the, uh, north elevation, because it's very, it's close to the adjoining home, but it is visible. You can certainly see it if you're walking by, or, so it, this is a house where almost all elevations are, are visible, with the exception of maybe that north elevation is, is limited because of its proximity to the adjoining house.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Mayor Taylor, I do want to correct one thing in the record. Um, the first case that you heard tonight was also the result of code enforcement. Um, the property owner had not obtained a building permit. So, they, they're both the result of code enforcement.
The first applicant, though, had not started to work on the parts that were...
Right.
Correct.
Yeah. What, what he was, turned in for code enforcement was actually not an enforceable item, which was a shed, correct?
Well, there, there was the lack of the building permit for the shed.
Ah, understood. Got you. Thank you.
All right. Any thoughts on this?
Uh, I personally think we have to apply it the same way we did the last one. We said, "You need to follow the SOI standards," and I think that's what we need to do equally
Yeah, I, I would agree. I guess the question is, do we have a, is there a, the same type of...
Can you salvage what's there?
Salvage, yeah. Or is this a, you know, back to, you know, back to, uh, you know, granting the appeal?
Um, Pierre, you talked about above grade and below grade on the site, on the, um, between the horizontal siding and the, uh, board and batten?
Yes.
And that's a, and that is a common...
Yes, it's very, very common.
Back in that day.
Right. And back in the day. You can look around, a lot of examples. So, it, it, I believe the house currently has, um, horizontal, board and batten, or horizontal siding.
Right.
So, you typically would see that in a basement situation. It's below grade.
Okay.
It's below street grade.
Pierre, looking at the language of the approval, you know, the first, the first item is layover or replace existing horizontal lap siding. Does that mean replace wherever possible and where not layover? Or does that mean that the applicant just gets to choose whichever they prefer?
I think what was meant there by the planning commission was that the applicant could, could choose if they wanted to layover the existing siding with, with, with new siding. They could do so as a, as opposed, but they have the option of replacing it.
Okay.
And the word wood was struck out. Does that mean that, that any other materials were considered then?
Uh, staff, staff was requiring, uh, wood, but, let's see, my recollection is the applicant was looking at some other type of material, and I, I can't recall if it was a composite. I can look, the applicant's application is contained in the staff report, so we could probably ferret that out.
Right.
That's describing the existing, though. Is there, is the existing a medley of materials? Is that what that's referring to? Is there already composite?
It's there and here.
Right.
So, with uniform, so replace that with this, but it takes the wood, wood out of both of them.
Okay.
I'm just, it's a question more than it is a statement.
It's my recollection from watching that, that one particular planning commissioner asked for the wood to be struck, as they were leaning towards a vinyl composite thing, how they were gonna do determinations in the future. And so, I think we do need to consider that, because they were doing a lot of interpreting guidelines.
Yep.
And I think we just need to be consistent.
And then Pierre, in that first, um, point of the approval, where it says, "With uniform lap siding subject to approval by staff," is that, is that common for that to also come back to staff? Or is that kind of part of the problem that's throughout this approval, with things coming back to staff?
Um, staff's opinion, it, it is problematic. I mean, typically, the applicant should have come with samples...
Okay.
To the planning commission to actually examine. That's typically what happens.
Okay, so it's in there because there was not any opportunity to view samples of the materials?
That's cor, that's correct. Basically, if you look at the building, the windows are already replaced, and I think it's sheer wall or plywood that's been already, uh, placed on the building.
Okay.
Yeah, generally, so for my, when I was on planning commission, we would see, not always, but, uh, the examples of the material used, or there'd be elevations, um, uh, or sometimes they would actually bring in the materials in, into the meeting. And so, it'd only be if we had to make a, a change that, you know, there might be something that goes back to staff, just to ensure that it was what we had, um, agreed upon as, as we're looking at a ruling.
Okay. Another, another question, with that same point, at the very end, the whole last section is struck through and layover or replace existing board and batten below grade with the same. But my understanding is that that is still the plan, correct? To do board and batten on the lower elevation?
That's my understanding, but I would leave, I would maybe request that the applicant clarify that.
Okay.
Wow. One, a lot of issues here. First of all, the lower house, the existing lower home is vertical shiplap. It's been there since we bought the home. There is no board and batten ever planned on the lower section. The four elevations I sent you, if you'll refer to those, Pierre, you'll find that they're very clear. The board and batten was proposed on the above three elevations. The back, we were going to leave, because it was already horizontal, different shiplap that the, the board members thought, or excuse me, the planning commissioners thought that was a good-looking side of the house. So, we were going to propose three different ones. I gave you elevations of those, and the lower is one by six, shiplap, and it's all vertical. Now, the, then, they, they wanted us to go horizontal siding, and we said, "Okay, we'll do that." The commissioners were going back and forth, what type of siding? So, they said, "Give Mr. Rivas two samples." I cut them, painted them, sent them to him. One of them was wood. It was more money than the other stuff. He selected the composite, uh, cement board and said, "That would probably be what you'd go with." And I said, "Okay, I, I'll do whatever you want. The other one's more expensive, it's actually wood, but it's what they call nickel gap. It's, it's got a gap that's about a quarter inch, and it's, it's a bit more of a flat siding, but similar to some of the other flat siding on the back of it, which is just old shiplap." So, this stuff with vertical and horizontal is, got me all wonky over here. I'm listening to, we're putting shiplap on the bottom. That was never the plan. And, uh, and we did give Mr. Rivas drawings. I literally drew him out in like a day and a half and had him back to him. So, we did try to comply with this. Once we hit the, the city department, building department, and we were cooperative from that point forward, it was only two days that we weren't, that all this happened.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, layover and replace existing board and batten below grade is struck through because that was never intended or planned? Okay.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, if I may, um, so, if you look at the, there's a, a series of photographs in the staff report that's part of the applicant's application. And so, you can clearly see the orientation of the wood. If I misspoke and called it board and batten when it's something else, fine, but if, you know, it's really the orientation.
Right. I'm just, I'm really narrowing down on the language here, because if we try to, you know, make modifications where we still pass the site plan review, then we kind of need to nail down on these details.
I'm kind of of opinion, this needs to go back to the planning commission. They put an awful lot on staff that they should have been doing, and that they need to apply the SOI standards as, you know, we've done in the previous appeal, and, and do the work. I mean, listening to the applicant and the staff, what went back to staff, what went to that, that, that all should have been in the planning commission meeting and approved in the planning commission meeting. And here we are trying to make a decision, and we can't see what anybody's talking about either. So, I'm of the opinion it needs to go back to the planning commission. Do it.
Yeah. I mean, this one's just really messy. I don't see a, a way to make this one livable in, in a way that we did with the other one. Um, I, I would, I would support a denial on, on, or affirming the, the appeal.
Dennis Paddy, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, if we can make, if we can make something work, I'd like to do that. I'm working to see if I can't figure that out, but it's challenging.
Yeah, I mean, that's my struggle, is we could come up with something that I don't even know if it's gonna work for the applicant, um, the way we're, we're trying to make it work up here.
Generally, that's, those are brought to the planning commission and negotiated with the planning commissioner. Not so negotiated, but you, you, you understand what...
That's what's hashed over, right?
Right. You understand what the challenges are, and...
Exactly.
Before you go into that. And, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is handled, you know, at the counter when they're doing negotiations with city staff, so that by the time it gets to planning commission, there's some very definitive ideas of what may or may not happen. Um, I mean, there still could potentially be choices, but here, we're, you know, we're gonna be trying to make this happen on the dais.
Well, you, you know, the challenge is, I feel like all the, I don't see any application of the SOI guidelines. And that's, and I think that's the biggest challenge I see, is that, that there, there is no application to those guidelines. It's, he, it's a rental, he wants to maximize his profit, which in a lot of situations, that's what you can do, and you need to, you know, do it as cost-effective as you can while still providing a meaningful place for somebody to live in, and, and it's a functional house. Unfortunately, that doesn't always dovetail with doing that in a historical district.
Right. That, it depends on where, where it is. I don't know. I'm just looking at the pictures. I really wish I had, I wish I was up there at the house, looking at it that way, but to me, it, it doesn't look, what I'm seeing, um, it's not real impressive, what's been done, but there's more to be done, so hopefully it'll...
You know, I'm not gonna lie, it's a little disappointing to see the side of the house with, with all the, with all the, um, the plywood on it, in, in place of all the siding that is there, and thinking that... that is there and thinking that, you know, that's, that's the ultimate goal is just to take that character completely away from it and, and move forward. Does, do I understand that correctly? That all this, you know, the vertical, the horizontal siding was still going to be replaced?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just underneath, not the top part?
No, the top part.
The top part?
In fact, the entire top part was going to go from horizontal to vertical. The bottom part was going to stay vertical.
So the top part was going to go from horizontal to vertical?
That's correct.
No, that's not how I read this.
That's the, the applicant originally proposed that.
Mm-hmm.
But that's not what the commission approved.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so this would, this would stay? This would stay?
So, I, you know, if, if the applicant comes up here and says, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to go with the guidelines, and that means the wood, you know, or wood or like, like wood windows. And, and, and some semblance of replacing the siding in, in a historical context, that's what we, that's what, you know, that's what the goal is, right?
Correct.
If they're willing to do that, let's do it.
Well, why don't you ask them?
Are you willing to do that?
Well, in general, yes, but I believe that the siding that Pierre had selected, saying that he believes that's what they would select, would be an alternative to that. We will, I'll go ahead and go out and buy expensive wood windows and put them in. But this is not what you've already approved in the city before. I just want to point that out. We're just, I just feel like we're just totally being abused here because of that. But that's fine. I'm willing to do it to put this to bed. I would like to be allowed at least to put the composite seven and a half inch profile lap siding on there. But I suppose I don't really have a choice at this point. You folks can do whatever you want to me. Do it.
Okay.
Really, I mean, honestly, we're just like, I'm dumbfounded. I've looked at historic properties, listed historic properties that you've allowed to do otherwise.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Hine.
Okay. So go, we'll take, accept whatever you do.
Pierre, can you, can you talk a little bit about suggesting the composite versus wood and if that happened in that way and what the justification was for that?
I want to understand if we're being consistent with our last decision.
So I'm referring to then where wood is underlying with, let's see, let me go back to that, where wood is struck out, correct?
Well, the applicant says that he brought you two samples, one composite, one wood, and you said the composite would be fine.
He chose composite. That's what the-
But was that based on the planning commission's direction?
No, I, I have in my possession right now, two samples. We haven't approved anything.
Okay. 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 All right.
I guess I'll just say we were trying to fulfill the planning commission's direction.
Right. And, and I, I'm not trying to fulfill the planning commission's direction. I'm trying to be consistent with our last decision that we just made on the previous appeal.
Yeah. Okay.
Because I realize the planning commission sent in one time, sent two different items back to staff for staff to decide. And that doesn't seem like it was really right to me that-
Right.
Yeah. And put staff in the awkward position to try to apply the SOI, but planning commission saying, no, you don't need to follow the SOI.
Yeah.
And I think what we're trying to say is-
You do.
Yeah.
Yeah, planning commission gave staff basically two different sets of directions on basically the same exact issue.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, yeah, the applicant did provide us a couple of samples that, that staff was looking at. I also received another sample from another interested party that I thought was even better than what was submitted. It came from Diamond Lumber. And I'm, my recollection is I spoke with the applicant about it.
Okay.
And I was going to try and obtain that sample to show him.
Okay.
So there's more to the story than just a little blip.
Yeah, okay. All right. So should we try to salvage the site plan review? Or should we send it back to the planning commission? If we, Mona, if we send it back to planning commission, do we kind of-
So we can't actually send it back. There's an appeal before you, and you have to make a determination one way or another.
Okay. So, but, so if we granted the appeal and the applicant went back to the planning commission, then we would kind of lose the ability to give the planning commission direction on, or-
My concern is if you do that, we may be back here again-
Right.
In a month or two.
Yeah.
Now, hopefully, there's a message there, but, but that's not for sure. And so that would be my concern.
My, my hope is to move this along.
Okay, yeah.
And, but, so I'm, I'm struggling with how to, how to word it, but hopefully somebody else can-
I'll, I'll, let me try to take a, take a stab at this and, okay. All right. So I will make a motion to approve SBR 22 dash zero one with modifications. And that approval would be repair, replace, is that, I just want to make-
Do you deny, no?
No, I'm, I'm-
Deny the appeal with?
Number four.
Number four.
Number four, okay.
Same, same as the last one.
Okay.
Uh, so the approval of repair, replace existing wood lap siding, above grade Sacramento Street with uniform wood lap siding, replace six original single hung wood win, windows with new wood, with new wood, single hung windows, and replace rain gutters and paint entire home cottage white. Everything else would be the same as in the, in number three and four.
Does that make sense to you, Pierre?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll, I'll second that. And I have a question. They, they, I even hate to go down this rabbit hole. They make vinyl windows with wood overlay, or they make-
Wood, wood clad?
Wood clad.
Yes.
Is that following the guidelines? Or is that deviating-
I would say no.
Way, way away from that guidelines, the wood clad on the exterior.
Not really familiar with that product.
Okay.
But anyways, I would say that's, if it's-
Yeah, gotcha. Yeah.
Okay, so we have a-
What did he say? What did Pierre say?
He's not familiar with that product.
Yeah. And they didn't bring that product forward either.
I mean, it's, it sounds like a modern product, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember- Just one, just really quickly, I know that the applicant said that he'll accept everything, but can we just invite him to the podium one more time to see if he's willing to accept this specific modification? Thank you.
Yes, I would love to know which siding you're going to force me to put on there, though. Horizontal siding. We've provided two samples to Mr. Rivas. One was already told to be accepted. Now, that was just a seven and a half inch lap siding, very typical. You're, you have it run on a lot of these historic homes around here now. So I don't know if that's what you're looking for. The cost to do a duplicate match of that cove that's no longer existing is $101 per board. A 16-foot board, $101. Are you going to make me do that?
That's not right.
Because that's, that's, I mean, otherwise, you know, siding, you could get for somewhere in, anywhere between 17 to about $28 a board in today's high standards. Now, if I had to do true solid spruce, it would be even more than that at 120 some odd dollars a board. So you tell me where I'm going to go with this. And boy, I sure hope that the future applicants get this same kind of cost handed to them because I think you're going to find a lot of people saying, what? This isn't right. So anyway. So Pierre, that wood that you were talking about from Diamond?
Yeah, that's what I'm curious. Do you know what Pierre's talking about that?
They, they keep talking about this three lap, and there used to be a cottage lap that was done by Boise Cascade. Is that what you're talking about? But that is a composite siding that was pulled off of the market because it rots from the interior. But I don't know which one you're talking about. I haven't seen a sample of it. No, and I need, I, I was trying to get a sample of that from the individual that brought it in. Is it teardrop, what Mr. Callan Smith bought tonight? Same stuff? I didn't know he brought, no, it was different than that.
I have a question, if I may. Do you want to question something, please? When you're talking about conversations you had with Pierre.
Yes.
And you offer samples, and you discuss samples with him, was that after the commission-
The approval, after the approval. The, the approval was that I was to bring samples.
Well, it surprised because I thought that when, if, when you have a decision by the commission, it's not final until the 10 days pass. And once it passes and there's an appeal filed, then it's still diamond.
Mona, would you mind laying in here on the-
Sure. So when the planning commission makes a decision, it, the project applicant that receives the entitlement takes the risk on moving forward with the project. It is possible that an appeal is filed. It's also possible that one is not. Of course, if they've invested time and money into something that gets reversed, that's on them. But there's, they're not prohibited from moving forward at that time.
Okay. I think we need to probably stop all the back and forth. It's out of procedure for this. So you, you can take a seat.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So in terms of the wood lap siding, do we need to leave in the motion subject to staff approval?
I'm not going to approve of something that's going to cost $100 a board. I, I mean, I thought that was interesting, and I think-
Well, we didn't put that in here.
Okay.
That's not in the motion. We didn't specify.
Okay, all right. I-
And we don't know if that, I mean, that's-
And honestly, we haven't, we don't have samples, and we-
Right.
Exactly.
The samples went to them. And so we don't know what wood siding we are approving. And that, and that to me is, is I don't know if it's a flaw or something that we can overcome.
I know. I'm having that same problem.
In the first one, we approved a horizontal lap siding. Are we doing a different-
Well, that was already, that was already existing. So it wasn't-
Okay, so he's doing a whole new-
Pierre.
Yeah, Mayor, overly this is helpful. The applicant did submit two samples. One of them was solid wood. And then an interested party also submitted something that was obtained from Diamond Lumber that looked good. And I believe that was solid wood as well. So they're not the expensive-
So is-
It's hard for us to, I mean, I think we'll need to defer that to-
Yeah.
Maybe we should ask for staff's recommendation on that.
Well, would you, would you feel comfortable going with either one of the wood siding?
I don't have them in front of me. I, I thought one was superior to the other. I don't know which is which.
Right. So this, herein lies the, the, the challenge of, of trying to figure out how to apply the SOI in this, in this setting without having, and I don't know how to get from here to there. Is, is there any recommendations?
I know the one looked, looked pretty good. I mean, it would, it would eliminate all the mismatch, mismatch that occurs on that elevation. And it would be then uniform. And it was wood siding, and it would be of a, of a vertical-
The applicant brought forward-
I'm sorry, a horizontal orientation.
Okay. The applicant brought forward an, an item that he was comfortable with and he, for you to make a decision. So we can say that that one is what we're approving.
Right. There were two samples that he brought for me to look at.
Of the two samples, the wood one?
That he brought to the planning commission?
No, he brought to Pierre.
Oh, and that is?
Right. And that's the one we're talking about.
And it was a similar size as-
Without walking up to the house and-
Yeah.
Aligning it. And that's why I say there was another one that someone had brought in, that I was curious to see what that product was.
And, and here we are. So.
So I was just, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Solid wood.
Okay. Yeah, again, I, I think it's a type of wood siding. They're going to have to go back for verification through staff anyway. So I'm comfortable with a type of wood siding that staff will ultimately have to sign off on anyways because they have to be able to see it and see that it's actually the correct application of what we've approved.
Right. So we'll go back to staff for signing off? That's-
Yeah, just like any other, you know, project or that comes before.
I like what you said, a type of wood siding.
Yes, if I could just, Mayor, may I make that point? I mean, it always comes back to staff. And staff then is going to compare what's being submitted, whether it be building plans or samples that it comports with the direction of the decision-making body.
Okay. Do you feel like we're giving-
I think so.
The direction that you need? Okay. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, correct?
I believe so.
Yep.
Yes, yeah, I think.
Is that, yeah, okay.
Let me just read it one more time into the record because I think there's been a little bit of confusion. But, but basically, the language that staff had initially proposed before the planning commission is, is being left intact with the exception of the following modification. The word wood is not going to be stricken. So layover or replace existing horizontal wood lap siding in accordance with the sample provided by applicant to staff.
We weren't going to do layover.
Repair.
I'm sorry, repair, repair.
A type of wood.
Layover or replace or repair, did you say? I had replace.
Repair or replace.
Repair.
I mean, if it can't be repaired, then it would be replace.
Repair or replace, okay. And then replace windows with new wood windows, single hung. Replace rain gutters. And then the rest of the language is as is.
Folks, I've got to say something. You can't replace any of the system siding. It's a mess.
That's why it's an overlay.
That's why it's an overlay. We can try to match it. Look, I'll tell you what. I'll pay the $100 a board, and let's just get it done. We're, we're too tired of this. I mean, this is crazy. No, I'll pay the $100 a board, and I'll give Kirk Counsel stuff exactly what he wants.
No.
No. Guys, we gotta stop.
Yeah.
We gotta get, we gotta get this thing going. I'll pay the $100. We gotta do it.
Well, again, that doesn't change the, the motion. So regardless of whatever anything was said right now.
He can give whatever he wants to it, Pierre.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we have a first and a second. And we need a roll call.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragossa?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
All right. It's late. Thank you all for hanging in there. Yes, and it, we do have a 10 o'clock rule, so.
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue the meeting past our, our 10:00 PM time. However, I'll make a motion that we, we drop item 13.
Eliminate.
Eliminate item 13.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to item 12, point one. Adopt a resolution approving a banner reservation fee of $150 for the reservation and placement of promotional banners across Main Street effective May 1st. And Mr. Zeller has his staff for it.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Currently, we do charge $125 per banner for those banners that go up over Main Street. And out of that 125, 117.50 goes to our contractor who has the bucket truck Ecosigns. And the remaining 750 goes to the city to main cable, maintain the cables and the hardware. Ecosigns has contacted us and told us, you know, due to costs that are rising, that they were going to raise their fee from 117.50 to $150. And so we feel it's necessary in order to at least break even with these banners to move our cost up to $150 also. There hasn't really been a lot of repair that has been done to the banner. There hasn't really been a lot of repair that has been done to the banner hanging apparatus, so I think that if there are any repairs that need to happen, we can absorb that in other operating fund budgets. So I would have put this on consent, but I thought it might be of interest to the council to just give you a little background that our staff used to hang these banners on the second-floor balcony of Historic City Hall, but then when the balcony was no longer safe and taken down...
I used to sit on that balcony.
Hopefully not in 2014.
Years ago.
So, so that's kind of the background. And so it's a very simple ask. We're just looking to try to break even with the banners that we have for hanging them. They're very popular. And this would go into effect May 1st, but we already have 12 banner reservations that we would not try to backcharge this cost. And I don't think it's gonna be that much of a difficulty budget-wise. So the council has the options in front of them to increase the banner reservation, reservation fee, $150, keep it the same and take a loss, or direct staff to do other alternatives. And I'll take questions.
This is the best nexus I've heard to a, a fee increase. Doesn't get much more exact than that.
All right. Any questions? Thank you for that thorough report.
We lost our audience. Oh, no, we have one. Oh, here, oh, we have one. Pleo's still there.
All right, we'll go to public comment on this item. For a member of the public, stay enough late with us.
Pleo, medic, coach, Sean. I always believe if you come to these things, you should see it through to the end. I do that. My wife forgives me. I sure didn't expect it to be this way. I think this was a great resolution, and I think it's a wonderful customer that you have. This is a semi-joke, but, you know, you honor secretaries, police chiefs, so many different things. I wonder if a citizen can put in an application to honor the city council.
Thank you, Pleo. All right, we'll bring it back to the council. I, you know, 750 per banner difference between what's proposed and what is costing us is a small difference. I generally think that we should cover the city's costs with fees. That being said, you know, it is not, local nonprofits that use a service, and it's a very minimal amount, but I did wanna just kind of highlight that, you know, my, my initial orientation is to cover the cost of a service with a fee, so...
If $150 will cover it, I'm all for it.
Well, it doesn't, that's the thing.
But then maybe we should think about...
It would be 157.50.
Okay, then maybe we should raise it. 157.50? No. How about 175?
It doesn't sound like the, there's much maintenance with the cables. I think that's what he was saying, so...
Yeah.
I've been here three years, and we bought grommets, so I think we're gonna be okay.
I would move, item 12.1 is presented.
You don't wanna increase it?
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Can we get a roll call on that?
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye, but I think we should raise it.
Oh, don't support it.
I told Dennis.
I know it's late, but...
Well, we're always talking about covering our costs, and we've got a, now, a chance to cover our costs.
Okay.
So that was a maybe. I'm an aye.
Councilmember Thomas? Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sergosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Nell?
Aye.
Only because it's local nonprofits.
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Where's my agenda? Where are we? It is late. So item 14, request for future agenda items.
There's something I wanted on that. Fred, hang on a second.
Cleve, we do have a joint meeting coming up with the planning commission?
I don't know if we were able to get the SHPO schedule on that. Were we, Pierre?
SHPO is not available at all.
At all, ever?
For the remainder of the year.
For the remainder of the year.
Right. They've, they've, basically, I spoke with Julianne, the historic preservation officer, and she told me that they don't, they just don't have the staffing available. They did hire some consultants. They're preparing modules, and those hopefully will be available at the end of the year, early next year. So staff is gonna, so, I mean, if it's more urgent to have a workshop, staff will be preparing that workshop. We actually located the 2011 workshop that SHPO provided to us, and we can show that. It was a very good presentation.
Oh, good.
And it was right after adoption of our, of our SOI guidelines.
Okay.
I have a request. Once again, I'm, I would like to talk about the crosswalks and the lack of them, I've had several people talk to me, and I also have the same problem, that they're not visible enough at night as a crosswalk.
On Main Street.
On Main Street. And I would like to have a, more of a discussion about it. Also, but I, and I talked to Cleve, and he, I talked about the ballards. I also think that they need to be lighted more, but he had further discussion on that, so... But especially, I would like to talk about the crosswalks being made more visible.
Okay. How does everyone feel about that?
And I have one, too. Somebody brought up, and it's an issue that's been important, and I don't know about important to me, it's just a nuisance more than anything else, is that's the campaign signs and, and the lack of any teeth and any real regulation on where you put them and how you put them, you know, and, you know, and what our city staff can and can't do in removing them. And then you have ones that are on private property versus public property, and, and there's a fines associated with that because whether it's either too big or not in the window, or the staff has to pick it up because it's placed on, I see so many of them popping up on public property, but I don't know that we have a, a system during campaign season that addresses those, that is...
Maybe Pierre can address that a little bit.
Yeah, we, we do run, run into the problem with signage. City staff has the ability to remove any, any illegal signs that are on public property. You don't have to get permission or provide out who the owner is or anything like that. We usually would take them and store them in the yard. We, we get from time to time off-site advertising signs that have nothing to do with a campaign that are in, on public right-of-way or in, in, you know, public property, and we remove those. What staff has been doing as of late is we've modified our notice to correct letters that basically state that if we, if we see, for example, illegal, you know, banners or those kinds of signs that are easily put up and easily removed and clearly would never be approved by our, that are just always inconsistent with our code, we will then fine them $100 per day per sign. And we've been quite successful in getting compliance with those, especially with some of our smoke shops that like to put out, pepper the whole property with signage, and so the $100 per sign per day, so that when staff drives by, we just take a couple photographs as evidence that those signs are there, and we're able to apply that. It's consistent with our code. Staff doesn't feel that it's excessive, you know, the fine, but it gets compliance much more quickly than, you know, slowly giving them 15, 10, 15 days to remove the sign when it's just a banner or a flag sign.
How does that apply to...
So actually, I'm sorry, I'm, we should either determine whether you want us staff to bring this back or give direction, but not have further discussion.
So you want it brought back?
Aye.
I, I didn't get a clear answer as to what is what, you know...
I guess the question is, do we already have something that governs? Sounds like we already have it.
We have, and I've looked at it, but it doesn't apply any, there's no penalties and no fees or penalties associated with doing what you shouldn't be doing.
So Mona, can I ask you this question? It's in our packets when we, when we run for office. It's in our packets, and there's a, there's a section pertaining to that. So isn't the candidate responsible if there, if it's placed in the wrong?
It depends on who placed it, but again, before, I feel like we need to, yeah...
Bring it back to talk about this, okay?
We can, or, or, you know, staff can provide, yeah, a summary of what existing rules and regulations are, and you can provide direction on how you'd like us to proceed if you'd want additional remedies, for example.
Okay.
Because there's, there's actually legal components with campaign signs that I also want to address separately. There's, you know, times in advance where after a certain time, we have to allow them. Before a certain time, we don't have to, so we can address all of that if you wish.
Okay.
I guess, would that be in a staff report just to, to counsel, and then we can decide whether we want to bring it forward?
We can, we can prepare a staff report, put it on the consent calendar, and you, if you don't have questions, if you don't have follow-up direction, you just approve it as kind of, you file it. But if you want to pull it, then that'll give you the opportunity to review and provide direction.
It's just a process. Question I have. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. You know, there's, there's this upcoming campaign in June, and there's, even if it doesn't get resolved, there's gonna be another one, so... In terms of the SHPO workshop, the joint workshop, do we want to bring that back? I mean, we had approved that.
Right. Well, it may be a little short notice to do it on the 19th. That's a week from tonight.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I hear you do still want to do it.
Yeah.
I want to work with Pierre. We can, we can pull that out. Maybe there's a private consultant that's an expert or something else that we can look at to bring somebody in. I think it would be good to have an independent person come in and, and discuss that.
Okay. And as part of that, would we, would we discuss or like have an item regarding specific guidelines for windows and doors?
Well, we, we can. Or we can, you can give direction to staff in that meeting of how you want us to go back and, because it may require them, yeah.
And would that need to be a requested agenda item, or would that just be part of the workshop?
I think that you would, I think that you can give us direction as part of the workshop, and then we would bring it back at a future meeting.
Okay.
Any changes or a, a policy or whatever that turns out to be.
So we do or we don't have it scheduled for the 19th?
We don't. We do not.
Okay. I've got it on my calendar.
Okay.
Pierre, the, I remember the individual, I can't remember his name, but he was on the original historic advisory commission with us, and he dropped because he thought he might work on the downtown. He was an expert in this. He did like Woodlands Historic District, but he was a, he was resident. He might be someone we can talk, I'll try to go back and look at my files and see if I can get his name, but he was, I mean, he was very good. He knew his, he knew his stuff.
And he was on your planning?
I'll take a look at the roster.
He was on the original historic advisory committee.
There is not public comment right now, but we're wrapping up, and then you can tell us what you want to tell us.
I'll link the common on any agenda items. You can check this here.
Oh, is that true?
14 and agenda items.
That is, okay. My apologies, then.
I want to express my appreciation to your counsel, your lawyer. And State Act, a member of the public, very noble about the Brown Act. Please, this was way too long of a conversation, a request for future agenda items. It's all good, it's late, but in the past, you've done this way too much. Cut it back a little bit.
Okay, thank you. All right, item 15, staff reports. 15.1, receive and file the police report. Chief Ryan, would you like to highlight anything, or...
I would, just briefly. So March closed out our first quarter of 2022. And what we do is we compare it with the first quarter of the previous year, and I'm, I'm pleased to tell you that we have a 33% reduction in our Part I crimes, which is a good indicator that we're on the downward slope, working real hard to ensure that it stays that way. Outside of the stats, or actually contributing to this, some of the stats, we've redeployed our bicycle team that's been dormant for a couple of years, so they're out and about more often, and just really getting back to that neighborhood and community policing philosophy and out there just searching for bad guys and keeping the community safe. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And item 15, any questions for...
Actually, Chief, it's one quick, well, it's quick. On the 45 sex offenders, do we know how many of those are unhoused?
Majority.
Majority?
Yeah.
Okay.
We used to hover around, we used to hover around 20 prior to the state releasing all the inmates, and then that jumped up to 40-plus, so...
Yeah, I was just gonna say, 45 is a huge number from historically where we're at, and the majority of those are, are homeless.
So I could tell you, when we had the 20, we had a better accounting of, of who was homeless and who was not, who had a residence. And a majority of those were, were transient in nature, and we know that because we, we have to re-register them once a month, so our lobby becomes just impacted with registrations during that time. And, and, and that gives us our indicator how many are actually transient, because some of them will say they have a residence when we were able to ferret out that they don't, so...
You know, of those 40, are, are any of them GPSed, or is it just HRSOs that are GPSed?
Yeah, you're, you're high offender, you're high-risk offenders, yeah. Now, some of the lower-level county probation, maybe you want to keep an eye on them, but a majority of the ones who do have the ankle monitoring, GPS monitoring, are your high-risk offenders, and we do have a handful of them in the community.
Okay. I just wanted to underline that for the community, because, again, it's unfortunate of policies that have been passed that we now have doubled our sex offender, and it's not just us, but certainly for, for our knowledge, you know, we have them wandering around because of a lot of policy issues that we can't actually put them into, either they should be still imprisoned, or we can't get them into actual housing anywhere.
All right, now, open this, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'm gonna open this up to public comment since we still have the public here.
I have comments, but too late.
Okay. All right. 15.2, fire report. Chief, do you have anything to highlight?
Just real briefly, as you can see in the report, March was a pretty busy month for our firefighters. There is an uptick in calls on both the engine and the medic side, and it just kind of one of those. There isn't anything that pinpoints it, it just was a busy month for our firefighters, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Chief Cordero? No? Okay.